Testing.
We have to hold the button to speak? Or is there an on?
Click it in the red light goes on, the sign.
Yeah, that's a like, so, uh, can you hear me? Okay.
Started, let's just do a sound check. Hi, Z here, can you hear us? You can't, we can't hear you, Z here.
Are you, you're muted?
Thank you.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. In according with session forty-five and fifty-three at the Planning Act nineteen ninety, as amended, this meeting of committee adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The committee of adjustment consider application for variances from the provincial of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and also consent to serve a property to create new lots. I would like to also introduce a panel today. To my left is Ms. Nellie Wobert and Mr. Jordan Allison, and joining us online is Sahi Bayat. And myself is Yim Chan, and I will be chairing the meeting, the hearing today. I'd like also to announce the land allotment. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Musasorgas of the Credit, the Anaslabi, and the Chipawa, and the Hola Sunni, and the Wendah people, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Musasorgas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment, public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person or virtual format. Some applicants or participations, our participant will make their submission in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through Webass and online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connected to the computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the options of participating via video or audio only. Or on, in that light, may I ask the people in the room turn off their cellphone or put it in silent mode? Thank you very much, yeah. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called on to speak. This, those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be restated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through Webass are not allowed to use shared screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. I received, how to receive a copy of decision of committee? People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of committee on an application must fill out a decision form, a request form. And this, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto Local Appeal Board T-Lab will be sending notification and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto Local Appeal Board T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decision. Only the applicant, the municipal affair and housing specify persons and public bodies as those defined, those term defined in the Planning Act are permitted to appeal decision of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. So I will like to also read out the hearing procedure. And I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. If, when you, when make, when you're making your submission, when the application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with the presentation. If desired, when the committee does not require presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions or take the matter into committee for decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address committee. I will comment when you, when your five minutes is approaching. Any presentation or other material you wish to submit to committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee member cannot accept material at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will take a, will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note, the committee may not entertain revisions to proposal at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application or substantially, if it's substantially revised, to ensure the revise, the revision is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then, individual either in support or opposed to the, to the application will, will be invited to speak. Generally, we will call on speakers in the hearing room and then those participate through Webass. Committee members may ask question of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all the speakers are finished, the applicant or the agent have an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The applicant will then be taken into committee for decision. So, so now we have to do a little bit of administrative thing here. Are there any declaration of conflict of interest on the panels and the staff?
Yes. Through you, Madam Chair, yes, I will be declaring a conflict of interest for item number two, nine seven seven Dufferin Street, file number A one zero two zero slash twenty-three T E Y.
Yes.
The resident in opposition is a family member.
Yes, and then, okay, thank you very much, yes. And, uh, any, uh, any other declaration? Okay, no.
Through you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have a conflict of interest with item number eleven, one twenty-seven Douglas Drive, file number A zero 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 one dash two four T E Y. And the reason of my conflict is I serve on a heritage advisory committee with the applicant's agent.
Okay, eleven, item eleven, right?
Uh, that's correct.
Yeah, okay, and.
One twenty-seven Douglas Drive, which I believe is requested referral to.
The two, but then you, you have to declare anyway, yeah, I think, you should declare.
I believe so, yes, it's correct.
Jordan, yeah, Allison, the conflict interest, okay. And I, I think that's it, right? And the next is, do we have deferral?
Through you, Madam Chair, so just a couple of things. There are no files that need to be closed this morning. We don't have minutes for adoption this morning. And yes, there are two requests for deferral. Item number seven, which is twenty-one Hillsview Avenue, file number A one zero eight six slash twenty-three T E Y.
Okay.
As well as item number eleven, one twenty-seven Douglas Drive, file number A zero 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 one slash twenty-four T E Y. So we can probably deal with the deferrals at this time.
Okay.
And we'll start with item number seven.
Okay. Can, sorry, I need to bring the.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair, if you can just read the purpose and the list.
Yes, I have to, can you give me a minute to?
Sure.
Bring up the file? Okay, so. Item seven, seven. Oh, okay, the item seven, twenty-one Hillsview Avenue. The purpose for this application is to order the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a complete third-floor addition, and also to enclose the front ground floor porch and reconstruct the front porch there. That is the agent with us?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair, we do have the agent online. We do have someone here in, in support, but we will hear from the agent.
Yes. We are ready, yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep, so good morning, yeah, we just wish to defer the application as we're, we started the process with, with the one house, twenty-one Hillsview. The neighbor has shown interest in renovating their house, which may affect the front elevation, or potentially rear, rear elevation as well. So we thought it would be best to defer until we finalize that and then come back with our application.
Okay, have you given us your first name and your last name and your address? Please, that's for the.
Yep, yep, first name is Scott, last name Shedden.
Yes.
S H E D E N. And, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, so the purpose is to discuss with your neighbor to force, to make some revisions? On the application?
Correct.
Okay, so we will just, also, there's a person in interest in the room. We will ask his comment on this too, yeah, please. Yes?
You're okay? Okay.
You, you, you support the deferral? Okay.
I support the application.
Also, but we are dealing with the, this is, yeah, okay, you also support the deferral so that they can, you know, revise the application, okay. So, yeah, all in, a motion for, to defer, please?
Through you, Madam Chair, I'll bring a motion to approve the request for deferral, specifically so that the applicant has time to work with the neighbor on some potential amendments before, before committee again.
Yeah, and no one objects to the deferral, and all.
And as there's no objections, yes.
Yeah, you second, all in favor, unanimous they approve, yeah, the deferral, yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair, we will move on to item eleven, and we're asking Member Allison to leave the room.
Okay. All right, number eleven is what, is one twenty-seven Douglas Drive. The purpose for this application is to order the existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a side, a west side, one-story extension, and also a second-story addition above the existing attached garage, and a new side west carport, and a rear cover deck, and rear cover decks on ground floor and second story. The existing attached garage was previously converted to habitable space as approved, or to maintain, I believe. So, do we have the agent here?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, we do have the agent here in person, and we do not have any registered speakers for this item.
Okay, can you come up to, yeah, she's. Oh, oh, sorry, sorry. Yes, yes, so tell us why you'd ask for the deferral, please?
Good morning, my name is Monica Kuhn, I'm the agent for the owner.
Yes.
Address is twelve Sacville Place. We're here today to ask for a deferral because, as you may have noticed in the file, there are conflicting reports or from transportation. And we are going to come back, it has specifically to do with the variance about a portion of the required parking space being in the front yard. And so we're going to come back with a request for a shortened parking space. But because it's a different section of the bylaw, it has to be recirculated to the neighbors.
Okay, that's a good reason, I guess, so, and, any other speakers on this? No, so do we have a motion to defer?
I bring a motion to defer.
Yeah, yeah, oh, Mr. Bayet, second.
Sorry, can we have that motion clear?
Yeah.
The motion is to defer?
To defer, yes, item number eleven.
Okay, in order to make revisions.
And, and also talk to the transportation to clear some variances.
Right.
Yeah, so, Mr. Bayet still second that? Yes?
Yeah.
Mr. Bayet second, all in favor? Unanimous they defer, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Through you, Madam Chair, we can now get to our operational change at this morning's hearing. So if you want to introduce that.
Yes, we will be piloting an optional change at our hearing this morning. We will all, we will now begin with the review of the agenda to ensure that a fair, timely hearing. I will read the agenda to determine which application can be dealt with immediately or, and which applicants have, or individuals, other than the applicant or agent that wish to address the committee. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda and ask for individuals to identify themselves. If there are people in interest, the matter will be held until all non-contested applicants have been dealt with. And if there are no people in, in interest, the item we will call in order of the agenda or non-contested applicants, yeah. So, so I, we through the agenda now, okay, so, um, I get to number.
So through you, Madam Chair, we'll begin with item number one, forty-five A Melville Avenue. I don't see any registered speakers for this item.
Okay. I need to open, this, this item number one, yes. There's no, no.
There are no registered speakers for this item, we just have the agent on the line.
Okay, so can we hear this one now?
So, through you, Madam Chair. We need to determine, does the committee require a presentation for this item? And are there any questions of the agent for this item?
Item number one, forty-five Melville Avenue. Do you, do you like to have a presentation, questions on this particular? We're just going through the agenda, we're not.
I have some questions on this one.
You have, okay, so we have to hold this one. Okay, item number two is nine seven seven Dufferin Street, do we have any?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, we do have a registered speaker in opposition here in person, so this item will have to be held.
Help, yeah, so item number three is two two four St. Max's Road.
Through you, Madam Chair, we do have one speaker in opposition for this item, so we will have to hold this item.
Okay, do I have to, should I read the purpose now or?
Nope, let's just go through the agenda.
Okay, item number four is five, five oh two Atlas Avenue, which is also sixty-six, sixty-one Vino Drive.
Through you, Madam Chair, we do have registered speakers in opposition for both item number four and five, so we will have to hold these items.
Okay, item six is four, Brestford Avenue.
Through you, Madam Chair, we will have to hold this item as we have registered speakers in opposition.
Okay, seven is twenty-one Hillsview Avenue.
Through you, Madam Chair, this item has been deferred.
Defer, yes, we just did that, right. And item eight is forty-nine MacArthur Street.
Through you, Madam Chair, I do not see any registered speakers for this item.
Okay, so we can, we can put this up on the agenda, right?
Through you, Madam Chair, we just need to double-check with the members if they require a presentation or if they have questions.
I have some comments but no questions on this, so we can.
So, okay, we.
We can deal with this application.
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, and then item number.
Sorry, we can deal with this application at this time, so please, yes.
Oh, okay, we don't go through anymore?
Nope, at this time we'll deal with item number eight.
On the eight, okay, let's have the agent then.
And if you can read the purpose of application and the materials that have been submitted.
Okay, let me find it, yeah. Okay, the purpose for this application is to order the existing three-story semi, semi-detached dwelling by demolishing the existing front cover porch, constructing a new cover front porch with stairs, and relocating the air conditioner and air conditioning unit from the front of the, from the front of the lot to the front corner of the, of the lot as approved by minor, appears minor variance decision. This, the current applicant is, is to correct and identify variances that were not included in the previous minor variance decision. They are seeking three variances. Can we have the agent?
Sure. Good morning, panelists.
Yes.
Thank you for this opportunity. So, forty-nine Metcalf, just to, to put into context, it's, there's another application, number ten, which is fifty-one Metcalf. So these two are to be, I suppose, looked at together perhaps. They're both Victorian houses on a historic street, on Metcalf Street. They're three-story semi-detached, they have an attached porch at the moment. So we're seeking variances.
Can I sit up before you start? So are you the agent for both items, number eight and ten?
Correct.
And also, I like to check, I haven't checked with the panel whether they do have questions on number ten, or we can just hear both of them right now? Do, do you want to separate, you know, okay, we can.
As I noted, I have some brief comments but no questions for the agent.
Yeah, so thank you very much.
I can just talk about one at a time if you would prefer, but I just wanted to put into context.
We prefer to, we prefer to hear both of them together. So also, please give us your first name, last name, and your address, please, just for.
Sure, so my name is Caroline, Caroline Spagelski, my address is fifty-one Metcalf. So I'm the owner, and I guess my own agent, for fifty-one Metcalf, and I'm the agent for forty-nine Metcalf, and the owner is a participant online also.
Thank you, and actually, we do not require a presentation from you on these two items because we actually have read all your submitted material. Now we can, we do, one of our panelists has some comment I'd like to make, so I will let him do that, and then we might, we may bring you back to give us some, the last thing you want to say to us before we make a decision, okay?
No problem, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I, this is an application that is located in a heritage conservation district, so it is afforded a part-five designation. The porch that we're looking at today, under the Heritage Act, would be what the Heritage Act defines as a built heritage resource. Now, in most cases, where an application comes forward to remove a built heritage resource from within a heritage conservation district, they're usually typically not allowed. But in this case, I think is a reasonable circumstance, and I, it is my understanding that the applicant has been working with heritage planning staff to find an accessible solution. I would like to just note for the record that I am a little bit disappointed that heritage planning has not weighed in on this, given that we're dealing with two properties in a part-five designation, and we're dealing with the removal of what that, what the Heritage Act defines as a built heritage resource. So I, frankly, I think the committee could have benefited from a little bit of direction from heritage planning, but, given my familiarity with, with the neighborhood and with, with this particular application, I, I don't have any concerns permitting the, the variances to accommodate two additional porches. So I know I've spoken to both the applications, but I just wanted to have it on the record with respect to the, the lack of comment from heritage planning, and my disappointment with that.
Okay, thank you, and also, actually, I also have a point to make for item number ten because they actually almost identical application. It seems that we do have a condition or a response from heritage on number eight that you have to go through a heritage review on number eight. But we would like also to have the same condition imposed on item number ten. Will you be, be able to that?
Would you like me to answer or respond?
I would like to get.
Yeah, okay, sure.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you for that comment, and I, I do appreciate the heritage value of our homes that we, our beloved homes that we really appreciate, and we appreciate the architectural character. So we did think long and hard about this removal of the porch and to put in place something that is really in the historic character of the street. You know, whether this building was built with smaller porches or not is unclear. I actually went through all the files in the, at the city to find old documentation. We also did work with Kristin Flood, so I do have an email that I pulled up, and I can share it with you, for forty-nine Metcalf, but I didn't follow through for fifty-one. You know, basically, there, as you point out, Madam Chair, that they are pretty much identical. So we use the same architectural language that was, you know, directed by heritage towards the design. And so that email was sent on April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, this has been around for a while. And her email basically states that on behalf of, I'm just reading it, on behalf of heritage planning, we will upload our, or we will, what did she say? Basically, sign off once the drawings have been uploaded into the system. So that, that is an email that I'm happy to share, so I don't know whether.
No, it's fine. Through you, Madam Chair, that's not something that's before the committee today, so.
It's also.
Please move on.
It will be done, the world, you, when you apply for permit, they will probably will follow that up anyway. So do we have a motion for both items?
Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, you have a question, Mr. Bayet, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, item number ten, is this going to be an amended application? Because there's some changes, I believe, in elevation, or not?
Number ten, I, I don't know.
That is the question to the applicant.
Yeah.
Sorry, can you repeat your question?
Is this an amended application? Because I noticed there were some changes in elevation. I may be wrong, but that's what I thought, so it's not a problem with the application, but is it an amended one or not?
It's not an amended application.
No change?
No.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, do we, do we have a, a motion then, for both items?
I'm happy to bring a motion, unless, Mr. Bayet?
Mr. Bayet, you want to make a motion? Okay.
No, it's a motion.
I, I'll bring a motion to approve the subject application with the condition on review of heritage, or sign off on heritage planning before it ultimately is issued for permit.
So it's for both item eight and ten, and anyone second? Ms. Wobert, second? All in favor for both items? Unanimous they approve, yeah, okay.
Through you, Madam Chair, we can now proceed with item number ten, or, sorry, item number nine.
Okay, Jordan.
So this is.
Number nine, right, so, okay.
So there's no registered speakers for this item?
All right, so let me bring it up first, number nine is, okay, oh, you, that's not my, my screen, sorry. Your number nine, seventy-seven Alameda Avenue, the purpose for this.
Sorry, through you, Madam Chair, we just need to confirm, does the committee require a presentation? Or do they have questions of the agent?
You need.
I have some questions on this application.
Okay, so we will hold this item?
Yes, okay, let's move to number eleven.
Eleven has been deferred.
Defer, yeah.
So we can move on to item number twelve, one seventy-six Westview Boulevard.
Okay.
There are no registered speakers for this item?
Yes, number twelve is one seventy-six Westview Boulevard. The purpose for.
Through you, Madam Chair, we just need to determine, members, do you need a presentation or have questions of the applicant? or have questions of the applicant? I see none, then we can move forward with this application.
Okay, we are, we are going to hear item number 12. The purpose for this application is to construct a new two-story osserie-like garden suite with a studio on the ground floor and a habitable space on the second floor in the rear of the property containing a one-story detached dwelling. This will be a total of two dwellings on the, on the lot, with one dwelling unit in the main house and the one dwelling unit in the garden suite. And the previous decision to approve, to legalize and maintain an existing one-story osserie building, which is, which was a studio, was previously constructed in, in the rear yard without a permit and had been since then demolished. And they, they are seeking three? I can't. How many variances they are looking?
Six.
Six, because I, my screen sort of falls, I can't.
Okay, they are requiring, requesting six variances, and then if you could just read through the materials list?
Yes, yeah. And for this, we have, we have received a copy of plan, a survey, site plan, four plans and elevations, four photographs of trees, and the, the previous decision affecting this subject property. We also received comment from Toronto Building Inspector, Toronto Building, and staff report from Urban Forestry, and also the, from Community Planning, to receive in February. We have support letters, petitions from 1237 addresses on Westview Boulevard.
Through you, Madam Chair, we do have the agent online, so at this time, we will unmute Gordon McGill. Again, there's no registered speakers for this item.
Okay, we are ready.
Mr. McGill?
Yes. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think that we, we have, we need a presentation from you, and we will go straight into the question if the panel have any questions now. Okay, no question. We actually have read all the material submitted, so we are ready to move it into this committee for, for decision. Would you like to address the, the panel, anything that you want to say now?
Sure, I will say one thing very quickly. I've done my best to consult with my neighbors, and their signatures are represented there. I also got support from Alex Legg in planning, and the reason that I received her support, her support is that on my own, I had, I did a shadow study of my building to make sure that it would not adversely affect the garden of my neighbor, and on the strength of that, she, she decided to give my project her support. So I did these things in order to show that I'm very concerned with my neighbors and their happiness.
Yes. Is there a forestry condition? Yes.
Number two.
Number that, you know there's a forestry condition attached to this application. You're okay with that one? Mr. McGill?
I, I filled out the creative forms and things for forestry, but I didn't hear back from them after I put my application in.
Okay, thank you. So he knows about that, too. Okay, so we, we are ready for, for motion.
With committee members, if you may.
Yes.
It's just, we have six variances in front of us, and I'm not concerned about the, you know, the, you know, first four, but I would like your opinion about the variances five and six. No, sorry, variances four and five, in regards to angular plane penetration, and I was initially concerned about that because what we have, it's probably massing, it's probably the dormers on the south and north side that create those, you know, the, the variances number four and five. But as the agent noted, they've done the shadow studies and they've consulted the neighbors, so I was just, you know, wanted your opinion if we should pay attention to that a little bit more.
Yes, go ahead, any comment?
Through you, Madam Chair, I, I also had some concerns with respect to the angular planes, but I think in this instance, those, those concerns are assaged because I think in this case, if you look at the elevation drawings, this also just has to do with some adjustment in terms of setback. And it appears where they're falling short of the property line, it, it, it's slight. I, I would say the inclusion of a slope on the roof of this certainly, I think, is in keeping with the purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw by creating those features, or adding those features on the building to help mitigate the impact of massing, and I think the application meets the requirements in, in that respect.
Actually, I also support this application in the beginning. What bothered me was actually not four, five, it's six, because the permitted height is six, and they are asking beyond that. But in the light of that no opposition, and also he has actually done a shadow study, so I'm sort of satisfied that he did have that concern and sort of resolved it. That's, that's, that's my comment. So, okay, any motion, please? Mr. Byatt, any comment? Yes, please, yeah.
No comment, I'd like to move a motion.
You have a motion, okay. Yes?
Approve this application, there are only two conditions, forestry number two.
Yes.
And a planning condition.
And a planning.
And the planning condition, yes.
Yes, so anyone second to that motion? Ms. Wilbert, all in favor? With two conditions, yes. Approve unanimously, thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair, we can proceed with item number 1396 Ferris Road. There are no registered speakers for this item. We just need to confirm from the members if they require a presentation or have questions. See none, we can move forward.
Yes, we can hear this item, number 1396 Ferris Road. The purpose is to order the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a partial side east addition and a basement secondary suite with a front basement walkout and a rear ground floor deck extension, and also to convert the existing one-story attached garage in, into habitable space. In this, we also receive a copy of surveys, site plan, four plan elevations, 18 photographs of the property, maps, and five photographs of the comparable property in the area. Commenting, comments we receive from Urban Forestry and also Transportation Services.
Through you, Madam Chair, we do have the agent online, which we will unmute at this time.
Okay.
Hello, Nilla Pho.
Yes. Give us your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Nilla Pho Soltani from K H Davis Engineering, 1468 Danforth Avenue. I'm the agent for the owner.
Yes, we have actually read your material and the panel, that's not, that does seem to require a presentation. They might have questioned, but do you want to address, have something to address us before we make a decision?
I actually do, if you don't mind.
No, please do, please go ahead.
Okay, all right. I just want you guys to know that the intent of this application is to provide extra living space for the homeowner, which has severe arthritis. He has disability issues, so he, he doesn't want a second story addition, he wants more habitable space on the ground level, hence making garage the living space. And I want you to reconsider the condition that Transportation put in place, because they're asking to revert the driveway back to landscaping and get rid of the curb, while he would still like to use his driveway to park because he has disability issues. So I want you to just reconsider that, and if there's no way to not, to, to not do that, at least give him some sort of a parking permit or something so he can use his driveway as is. And I have provided many existing houses that only have front driveway and they use it as their parking. They've either feel the access to backyard or don't have any sort of garage on the side. So I just want you to consider that. That's basically it.
Okay, actually, I, I don't have the transportation in front of me. Can the staff bring that up, please, so we can see it?
Transportation. Through you, Madam Chair, we're presenting it on the screen.
Yeah, I see that now, yeah. Okay. Do you have, panel, you have any questions on, on the request to ignore this request? Yeah.
I, I have concerns, it's kind of coming up, it kind of threw me a little bit, to be honest. I don't, I, my concern is whether, I mean, whether or not there's even place on the subject property that can support parking with the new addition, or if the applicant is relying on part of the public right of way. Madam Chair, I frankly, and I'm also, I'm not sure with respect to front yard parking pads, whether or not that's something that Transportation, I, I think without comment from Transportation, I have some concerns with the request to remove that condition.
I have concern too. Usually, they, they have, if they, if Transportation asks to impose conditions like that, they have their reason, and, and yeah, I, I, I'm afraid if I support this application, I will have to agree to the, the condition. Any comment from people?
Yes.
No, sorry.
Yes.
Sorry, do you have any more question? Because we are, we are ready to move it into discussion now.
Just commenting on what Jordan said, my original drawings to zoning, I did provide a parking pad, and it does show that it's within the property, it doesn't encroach on the city's property. But the examiner said, well, I can only provide a variance for zero parking, that's why I removed it from the drawing for committee adjustment. But it is submitted and it's uploaded online, if you want to see, the parking pad is within the front yard.
Seeing as that there's no variance to permit the parking pad, I question, it is something the applicant might apply for after the fact, rather than, I, I don't see any of the variances today with respect, I mean, the condition to remove the curb, I understand, but frankly, the way I see it, it's you're, you're removing the garage and you're affording yourself the ability to expand the house, you're removing the parking, then that, the curb cut should be restored.
So can we, can we just state that there will be no park, no front yard parking as included in this approval?
Through you, Madam Chair, the plans that we have before us, and if I can just get staff to present the site plan, it's dated January 4th, 2024, it does show a proposed parking pad in the front yard.
That's right.
Just unable to.
So that's slowly coming up on the screen, sorry. It's a large package. Site plan, please.
It's before.
Oh, so is it, yeah, is, yes.
So in this case, sorry, agent, please, in this case, the variance that is before us is because there's no legal parking spot on site? Okay?
Yes. So I, I suggest that maybe this, we should defer this case and should sort this out, have, commit a revised site plan. Because I, we cannot, we, we do not want to have a condition, impose a condition that is irrelevant, but on the other hand, from what she described, is there's some discrepancy of what the drawings.
Through you, Madam Chair, are, would you be approving this application on condition of tying it to the site plan? Because if that's not the case, then I don't believe a deferral is required for today. It would, it would just be, what's before you today is a condition imposed by Transportation Services, and the agent would have to work with Transportation Services.
But as she says, she does not want to restore the curb, and she does not want to do that part, she doesn't, so what?
That is, that is something that she'll have to, you know, deal with, with the owner of the property.
Yeah. And then she said that she, she will have removed the parking, but then.
The parking pad is not legal. What is before us today is that there will be no on-site parking.
Yeah.
That is what you would ultimately be approving on condition with the Transportation Services condition.
Yes.
And then the agent and owner can work with Transportation Services.
Yeah, maybe that's the best, unless, unless he should defer it and get approval from
I don't believe Transportation Services is going to change their comment.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Thank you for clarifying that. If you approve, then we will have to put that condition in. Okay. So are we in committee now? You clear, you clear the committee? So any comment or motion, please?
Madam Chair, quite happy to move a motion.
Yes.
So I'd like to move a motion to.
Yes.
To approve this application with the Transportation condition attached.
Okay, anyone second to that? Yeah. Oh, Ms. Wilbert, second? And all in favor with the condition, Transportation condition? You let me see approved with this condition? Thank you, next item.
Through you, Madam Chair, we can move on to item number 14, 195 Gilbert Avenue. There are no registered speakers for this item. Just confirming that the members don't require a presentation or have questions of the applicant. See none, then we can move into the application.
Okay, the purpose for this application is to construct a new one-story osserie building, which is a detached garage in the rear yard, but in the laneway. The existing garage in the rear yard will be demolished, and we receive a survey, site plan, four plan elevation, three photographs of this property, but also we receive comments from Community Planning and also advisory comment from Metro Link.
Through you, Madam Chair, we do have Eddie Perez agent online. At this time, we will unmute Mr. Perez.
Okay.
Hello, good morning, Madam Chair and committee members. My name is Eddie Perez, I'm here on behalf of the owners and designers, bike 37 Rogers Road. It's a pretty straightforward application, we're planning to build a garage at the rear with three minor variances, and we have a, I spoke with the planning and we're okay with planting a pine locust tree in the back.
Okay, thank you. I, I do not think we, we need a presentation from you, but the member might have some questions. Let me check. You have any questions? Okay, doesn't seem to have any question, and you have addressed the committee.
I have a question.
Oh, Ms., sorry, I forget to look up on the screen, Mr. Byatt has a question. Yes.
I apologize for being away. Just a quick question, variance number one, you're looking at a significant request for soft landscaping at this point. I was just wondering in your case, because I was looking at the site plan, there's an area on the site plan that I wonder could be added, have additional soft landscaping so that you mitigate the, the, the amount of soft landscaping that you're asking for. If I look at the site plan, there's a space ahead of the, of the imaginative soft landscaping, propose increased patio. So by increasing the patio, presumably that goes, doesn't go to soft landscaping. Is it possible to reduce that patio and increase the soft landscaping to some degree? Because I think the 37% is quite low when you have an opportunity to change it.
Well, if you look at the rear, we have a lot of landscaping there, it's almost all grass at the back. There's an existing patio there, and when we remove the garage, it's also concrete as well, so the gentleman wants to make a patio that. So the gentleman wants to make a patio that's more usable for the family and such. Most of it is green. If you're going to most of the city, you don't have this much green like we're providing. If you look at the footprint that I'm showing you, it's almost all green in the back, because the way they do the calculations. And plus, we talked to planning, planning was okay, as long as we planted a tree to replace the tree that was there. The tree that was there, we have right to cut it because it's undersized, but we agreed to plant a new tree for green space. So I feel that what we're proposing is, is meet support test, and we'd like to keep it the way it is. Thank you.
So in addition, may I ask a quick question? The proposed walkway from the garage to the patio, what materials are you using? Are they permeable?
We can put permeable papers there if you want.
I would like to add that as a condition, so at least there's more porosity in the backyard.
Okay, no problem.
Yes. Actually, I'd like to add that, I actually agree with Mr. Byatt, because I have the same note here. It's not that, the argument is that that's already a lot of soft landscaping, but they still have a deficiency. That's why we can, we can request you, and they are doing work there, they might be able to improve it. But given that Mr. Byatt also satisfied that if we put a condition for permeable paper for the walkway, so he's willing to, I believe he will be willing to support this application. Right? So that's my position too. But I'd like to make the comment that despite what he said, he still have a deficiency in soft landscaping. Okay.
Through you, Madam Chair, I, I appreciate that, that, the comment from Mr. Byatt. I think that in this case, my understanding is the applicant is removing an existing structure on the property to accommodate a new structure, then the removal of the initial, the existing structure, in fact, should be complete. If you're going to demolish a garage, I think the foundation or the hardscape pad that is part of that garage should also be part of that demolition to accommodate the new structure. I, I think falling short, frankly, for doing a kind of half demolition, I just don't think is, I, I agree with Mr. Byatt, I think that the quantitative value of that variance, I think falls short, and I think could be brought in alignment if the demolition that's proposed is actually proposed in, in full, rather than a partial demolition.
Yeah, I, yeah, that's why I said, it seems that there's an opportunity to meet the soft landscaping.
I mean, break, break up the foundation, break up the hardscape on the existing garage.
Yeah.
But I.
But it's a trade, and I think that I can accept the condition. But then I'd like to point out that it's not what it's.
It's a good observation. I actually, I missed it. It wasn't in my notes until it was actually brought up, and I realized what, that, why we're falling short on that. So I, I thank Mr. Byatt for making that, that comment.
Yeah. So Mr. Byatt, we give you opportunity to make a motion. We like your comment.
Thank you, Chair. I, I'd like to move a motion, and much to my better sense, 37% is still deficient. When you have an opportunity to improve, I would hope that agents would do so. Given all of that, I think with, with this particular application, I'd like to move approval, with both the planning condition in place and the condition that the rear walkway be produced out of permeable materials.
Okay. A second to that motion?
I need to add, there is a MetroLink's advisory.
At this advisory, yeah, 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 we will, yeah, we, there's only advisory, yeah, it's not condition. Yeah, you can, Ms. Walbert, second. All in favor? Approved with those two conditions? Yeah. The permeable paper for the walkway? Yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair, can we just have Member Walpert put up her hand? Yep. All in favor? Sorry, just want to make sure. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, through you, Madam Chair, we can get to item number 1555 Castle Frank Road. There are no registered speakers for this item. Just checking to see if the members require a presentation or have questions of the applicant.
Actually, I do have a question about the first, first variance, this soft, again, about.
So through you, Madam Chair, if there are questions, then we'll hold this item?
Yes.
Okay. So then that concludes the first 15 applications that we have before us this morning. And for public record, we just want to ensure that we confirm items number one, two, three, four, five, six, nine, and 15 have been held.
Yes.
Okay, and at this time, we can proceed with the held items. So we will begin with item number one.
Yes. Item number one is 45A Melville Avenue. The purpose for this application is to construct one-story ancillary structure, which is a carport, to place the existing garage in the rear yard, and the property is a two-story semi-detached dwelling. We receive a survey site plan, four plan elevations, we also receive comments from transportation. We are ready for the agent now.
Through you, Madam Chair, there are no registered speakers for this item, and we will unmute the agent at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, Osvaldo?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes. Yeah, can you state, state your name and your address for us, please?
My name is Osvaldo Ferreira of 45A Melville Avenue.
Yes. So, yeah, we are ready.
I'm the owner and also the agent, I guess.
Yes. Would you, would you like to tell us what you, you are applying? And just give us?
Sure.
Brief description.
Okay. So I'd like to demolish the existing garage and replace it with a larger solar carport that maintains parking for two cars, as well as providing the optimal roof surface to install maximum number of solar panels on the top with the optimal angle for Toronto or close to it anyway.
Okay. Any question? I do have one question, but, no, my first question is, what pops out is variance number one. I sort of look at your site plan, it seems that it's very difficult to get any soft landscaping, but I'd like to hear from you.
Sure, I can address that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we listed that there's 0% soft landscaping. The reason why I put that down is because about 60% of the backyard currently is patio stones. So they're quite porous, you know, when, when it rains, like both the precipitation rain goes right down through. And there's like a strip of concrete sort of close to the house, and another strip that connects the garage and the house. The rest is all patio stones. So I guess technically, that's not really soft landscaping, but partially, and it's also quite easy to change those stones if necessary to something else. It's softer, so it's, you know, either way. I personally think that, that there's enough infiltration of rain precipitation through the existing stones, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I hear what you said, but soft landscaping is not just about taking in water or filtration, it's also for the environment, right? So we, as committee, we sort of more in line with the city, also the official plan, that not to make it worse. Every application, we would like to make it better.
And, and in. Yeah.
In your case, actually, I don't, I look at your site plan and I look at your photograph, doesn't seem to have any attempt to make some, I didn't even see the way porous paper you, you are describing. It looked like concrete.
Yeah. Yeah, I understand.
Can you explain that, please?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't sort of, like, I didn't write, I didn't indicate that in the site plan to show the difference between the patio stones and the other part, because I figured it really was technically all currently not soft landscaped, so that's kind of how I left it. But I'm, I have no problem with changing the stones.
Are you willing to give us some kind of improvement? Let's say, give us, you require 25%. Can you give us, like, let's say, 20%?
Yes, I can.
In order for, I mean, for my support, I guess other panels, panelists, they can say whatever they want to say, but I would like to see an improvement on that.
Yes, I would be able to do that, yes.
You agree to 20%?
Yes.
Wait, you, you've been asked for 25%, and I said that at least moved up to 20. 25 is even better, but, but I'm pushing it now.
That's a change. Ask for 25, you'll get 30.
Okay, 20%. Do you know the percent? Can you work out the percentage of square footage of 25, 20%?
You want me to work it out?
Yeah, we need that, no, we need the figure for, for the work.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's see here.
For the rear.
All right, so it's 9.09 square meters. 9.09 times point two, 1.82.
1.7.82?
1.82.
No, you cannot.
1.82 square meters, is that right?
Not be, because 25 is 9. I think that you.
Oh, wait a minute.
Yeah, 9 divided by 5.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry, I did.
Times 4. Do that, yeah.
Oh, yes, 30, oh, it's starting at 36, I used the wrong start number.
Okay, good, good.
36.35 divided by 5.
7.27.
7.27, is that right?
Yeah, it's 7.27 square meter, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, you agree with that, right? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right. Okay, we.
Mr. Byatt?
Mr. Byatt, no, sorry, let me, let me get this into order first. So you have anything else you want to address the panel? We are ready to move it into decision now, in discussion.
Not specifically, I mean, if you want me to address the, the variances, I can myself, but, or I can just take questions if you have a question.
Okay. Okay, just give you an opportunity. So, okay, we are in this, in committee now. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, before committee, can I ask a question of the agent? Thank you. Agent, I was just wondering, you're, you're building a carport that is open presumably on all four sides?
Yes.
Is your carport open on all four sides? It's basically an open structure.
Yes.
I must commend you for the idea of the solar panel. You are environmentally sound, which is good to hear. But I was just going to ask, the, the base of the carport, what, is it going to be a concrete slab, or are you hoping to put something permeable?
A concrete slab. And the, the foundation will be helical piles.
No chance of any porosity, porous materials?
Underneath, I wasn't thinking of that. I mean, I suppose it could be gravel or something, but I think if we, if we add the, the soft landscaping in the rear yard, that should be sort of meeting, meeting that requirement.
I think so. But thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem.
He's, he's also trying, Mr. Byatt, to, yes, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also had some concerns with respect to the first variance. I think those were adequately addressed with the inclusion of the permeable paper, so I thank you for that. I did have a little bit concerned with respect to the proposed height of the structure. In a lot of cases, when we have backyard structures, we have, you know, things like angular planes to help mitigate the impact. I understand, you know, the applicant answered my question very early on with respect to why it has this slope that it does. It is a bit, if I may, unusual, I think, an unusual structure to find at the rear. I, frankly, I do have a little bit concerned with respect to the height, particularly where it is located in the backyard, and some of the impact that it may have on the adjacent properties. With respect to the angle, is there any way that we can reduce the slope slightly without, well, and I appreciate the use of solar panels, but I wonder if there's a way to slightly reduce that angle to bring down that, the height that's requested, such that we can still have a, a structure that doesn't appear to be, you know, two stories at the, almost two stories at the rear, and open? Because it is, it is quite, I think, quite imposing.
We can, we can ask the question, because I, I expect that it's got to do with the workable angle for solar panels.
It may be the optimum, but I question whether or not there's a middle ground, right? Where we're sort of.
Can you ask the applicant, can you bring the, can you bring back the agent, can you answer the question where?
Yes, I'm here.
Can be shallower or something?
I can, yes. I've looked into this at some degree of detail. So using the, the bylaw required height of four meters, and then also having the laneway side tall enough to get a car in there, the maximum angle of inclination that I could get would be about 12 degrees. Now, in, in Toronto, because of our latitude, the recommended angle for solar panels is actually 36 degrees, so 12 is only a third of that, it's actually quite far off. So with my proposed steeper inclination brings the angle to about 19.2, which is still not ideal, because it would actually be, have to be taller still, you know, to get to the 36. But I, I figured that that was actually kind of a, going to the 36 would probably add like another, you know, another eight feet to it or something like that. So I thought that was too mu, too much of a, of a height. So I thought kind of a middle ground there. And then the other thing is that at 19, of course, there's a difference between the summer and the winter. So in the summer in Toronto, the ideal angle is around 20 degrees, and in the winter, it's about 65. So that means that at 19, it's pretty, pretty close to what you want in terms of the angle in the summer, and in the winter, it's actually nowhere near. So either way, like, even at this height and inclination, it's actually quite far away from the ideal solar angle, so which leads to a decrease in efficiency, of course.
Understood.
In terms of height, I mean, I understand, but, I mean, one thing that is allowable, of course, there, on the same, same property, like an ancillary laneway house could be built, which, which could be even taller than this, right? And I expect many in our, on our, on our block will be doing that as the years progress. So I, I think the, sort of the overall landscape of the laneway will be changing in the next 15 or 20 years, where, where many structures will be quite, quite a bit bigger and taller than they are now.
Thank you, yeah. Thank you. Any more questions?
Okay, through you, Madam Chair, sorry. I can suggest one option for item number four, if it's going to make the committee members feel a bit more comfortable with the height of 4.88 meters. We can stipulate in the variance, and sorry, we can present it, the list of variances on the screen, that variance number four can be amended to read the ancillary structure carport will have a height of 4.88 meters at the highest point.
Yes, tied to.
Then that way, everyone knows that it's not 4.88 meters across the entire roof, but just at that high point.
And then we can tie to the drawings of.
That is also an option, too. You can tie them to the elevation drawings.
Yeah.
And site plan.
So we are in committee now. I'd like to actually respond to your concern. And it doesn't bother me too much, you know why? Because as they say, it's only at the highest point. Secondly, if you tilt it shallower, it's still there. There's the slope, and then, and then one, one end is just like that, and then the other end is higher. So, so what I'm trying to say is, it doesn't actually bother me too much, because I think that it is a trade-off for something to work, like a solar panel, they're always taking away low slope, and then for snow load and all that will get a bit of, to make it functional and work, I think that they have made some compromise. And to, to also comment that they, they're willing to increase some soft, include some soft landscaping. That's where I can support the application.
I just want to, I agree with Madam Chair.
Through you, Madam Chair, sorry, Member Walpert, can you speak directly into the mic so everyone can hear? Thank you.
I'm not sure, I think it's, yeah, it works. I agree with Madam Chair about the improvements for, you know, for, you know, soft landscaping and about the angle. I was satisfied with the answer about the angle, because, right? I was satisfied with the answer about the angle because, right, you know, solar panels, especially in Toronto, we're not in Florida, we need some angle to catch sun. And I just need to clarify, did we agree about the permeable papers for the structure, or not?
I think Mr. Bayet asked, and then he said, the applicant says no. Because he's saying that giving us 20% of the soft landscaping is probably enough to offset the lack of permeable papers.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that's not included, yeah.
Alright, okay, so just to clarify that, and I'm satisfied.
Now, I see Mr. Bayet waving his hand, he's got, yes, Mr. Bayet, yeah.
Sure, I just quick, a quick couple of comments. I think I have no concerns about the height at the one end. Given that this is an open structure, there's no sense of massing, unlike a solid wall. So I have no concerns about the height at all. And the change in the agent's desire to increase the soft landscape, I think that's perfectly fine. Because if he could have just produced an application to build a garage, and we could have had a garage, a solid structure, not as high perhaps, but it would have been a solid structure. I think this is a really interesting project. And I think the height is quite justified. So I would be in complete favor of this application with the amended amendments that have been made.
Yes, it's amended, and also, are you making a motion now, please?
I certainly can. So I'd like to move to approve this application.
And tie it to the side elevations?
Side, perfect. That the variance number one has been amended, so it's an amended application. And I think that's it, if I'm not mistaken, I don't think there are any other conditions.
Yes, anyone's.
Madam Chair, sorry, are we also amending variance number four?
No.
To include?
Through you, Madam Chair, are we also amending variance number four to include 4.88 meters at the highest point?
Yeah, you can say that, but also tie to the elevation.
And then tie to the elevation plan?
Yes.
That would be perfect, yes.
Yeah, okay, anyone second to that motion, it's very clear, right? Mr. Allison, second.
Sure, I'll second that.
And all in favor, amended and with that condition, yeah. Your name is they approved, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, Madam Chair, we can proceed with item number two. I have declared a conflict of interest, so I will be leaving the room. At this time, we do have Nicole Ivanov, who will be acting as Deputy Secretary Treasurer. She is with us virtually, so she will be here to assist in this item.
Good, thank you.
Okay, and for you to know, the agent is here in person, as well as the resident in opposition, both speaking, okay?
Okay, they will have some, okay, thank you. Can I just read the purpose for this application? Please sit down, yeah, welcome, yeah. And this is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story detached routing by constructing a three-story rear addition with a rear garden floor, concrete deck and stairs, and a rear basement walkout, and also a new coatroom underneath. To also construct a two-story detached ancillary building, which contain a garage and a one-laneway suite. In the rear yard, updating the laneway. The existing garage in the rear will be demolished, and there will be six residential units, one primary and four secondary suite within the main building, and one laneway suite in the ancillary building. So we receive as a site plan, no, survey site plan for plan elevations, two photographs of the trees, and three photographs of the neighboring property, and a cover letter from the agent, and also the, there's an urban forestry permit. And we receive comments from urban forestry, from community planning, and also an advisory report from urban forest, advisory comment from urban forestry. We also have opposition from 963 Dufferin Street. So we are ready for you, please. And since you have opposition, we would like to have like a presentation from you, the maximum five minutes, you can start now.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, my name is David Stickney. I'm the agent for the owner. My address is 67731213 Side Road, Ottawa, Sega, in Clearview. I believe you've described the proposal very well. The variances required are three. My comment on the first variance is that the entire side of the street is virtually all three-story buildings. The adjacent both sides and further up the street all have side walls that go all the way to the third-story roof. The existing walls that are there are 9.75. I would want to clarify that the drawing actually shows 10.17, where the maximum height is 10 meters in the zone. That's not an issue because the original, you're allowed to take an existing building and put six inches worth of brick on the sides without any regard to bylaw and setbacks. That apparently does not apply to the roof where they were going to put insulation on the upper part of the roof. What we're going to do is actually internalize that so that in fact, there will be a complete compliance with the 10 meters. But back to the side walls, that's the height that they virtually are now. When you make a flat roof, because the roof itself goes mansard, slope, slope, mansard, when you make a flat roof, the height of the wall goes right to the top of the roof. So that's why the variance is what it is, simply because that's what the walls are now. But the height of the wall on the existing, because it's a profiled roof, is 9.75. So we're within this much of the height limit generally. The depth of the building, which is the, we have, just to quickly describe the area, it's Dufferin Street, 24-hour transit, 200 meters south of the subway entrance, a district shopping mall across the street, and a very large development on the Kent School site, where the closest tower is 13 stories, where the Kent Building is being restored. And it is higher, as a two-story plus lower level out of the ground, is higher than our building. But the essence of that proposal is that they're maintaining the Kent School podium, and all the towers are to the west of that. So the streetscape, we're maintaining the streetscape general height of the Kent School and the houses on the street. But the lot itself, normally we're dealing with lots in Toronto that are 120, 125 deep. This particular lot is 169, it's actually virtually 170 feet front to back. So utilizing the lot for the depth of building is maximizing here. We have five units in the building, and we're proposing the laneway suite at the back. The variance for the laneway suite is in fact the landscaping. We want to maintain the two parking spaces despite the proximity to the subway. I mean, it's almost as far to go to your car as it is to go to the subway in this proposal. So I think that the area of variance that we're asking for is virtually nine by nine, or nine and a half by nine of green space. We have from the tree permit previously in agreement to plant tree in the backyard. I believe one of the conditions specified here is to plant a tree in the front yard. That's fine, and certainly the application for a permit related to the construction of the laneway suite is an acceptable, well, that's a guaranteed commission, condition. So I would also point out that the neighboring buildings by this committee in 2022, and is 997, is five dwelling units in a building that's 22 meters long, sorry, 21.8 meters long, with a laneway suite. The building to the south of it, which was the same developer, has five suites as well, and has the laneway suite behind. The building to the south of that has three units, generally speaking, all the way down. There's a few retail fronts where the ground floors are retail and the upper floors are apartments. But in general, because of the nature of the street, the proximity of the subway, I think this is a really inappropriate development for this particular.
Five minutes up. Yeah, you finished, yeah?
I'm sorry?
Your five minutes is up, you're done, right? So you can, let's have the opposition comment, please, yes, welcome, please. Yeah, take the, take that seat, yeah, and tell us, tell us about your concerns, thank you.
Morning.
And state your name and your address.
Absolutely.
For the record, please.
My name is Carmy Drum, and I am Maria Salatino's daughter. I live at 9 Pine Forest Road.
You have five minutes to this.
Yes, I'm going to try to be quick. Mom has lived at 963 Dufferin Street for over 65 years. The street has changed from single-family homes to rentals over the years. There are absentee landlords, if not all absentee landlords, which has resulted in the properties becoming grossly neglected. The street has become rundown over the past 65 years. The property at 977 Dufferin Street is three homes away from my mom's. My mom's house is two stories, and so are other homes on the street, not three stories, as has been represented a few minutes ago. The owners are planning to build an extension, which is much larger than the existing house, and build a laneway house. These are not minor variances, as concurred by Clark Engineering in the report I have submitted. What will happen is that the existing house will be turned into three or four units. The large addition will have at least four units, with one or two more units in the laneway house. We are looking at an apartment building, which takes up most of the existing. My mom and neighbors will be staring at an unsightly wall, which is not acceptable. The development is not in character with the homes on the street. So I know that this guy says, you know, there's houses that, you know, there's a whole bunch of units, and there's now other houses which are being turned into retail. But there's a huge stretch of people that have been there a long time, and these are people's homes. And so that has to be respected. So if the owners of 977 want to build an apartment building, they should go downtown and find a bigger lot to build their apartment building. And trust me, the existing building will be turned into a whole bunch of units. Nobody wants to live on Dufferin Street anymore because of the traffic, the congestion, and it's only going to get worse. Thank you. Any questions?
Do we have any question to this speaker? Mr. Bayet, any questions? Okay, no, we don't have question for you. And you can bring back the agent to respond to your comments, please. Can you just focus on just the, yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair, just if I can premise, I have a question, but it's actually for the applicant, because I don't.
No, he's here. So we, no, we will ask any.
Should we allow him to respond first? Okay.
Yeah, let him respond to, because he's fresh. We respond to those issues that raised by the last speaker, and then we will ask your questions.
Sure. The, it is true, the photographs that I submitted for the houses, certainly the houses to the north, there are 15 houses to the north and 15 houses to the south, between the lane and the park on the south, and between Bluer Street and the bank on the north. Most of them are multi-unit and of the same height, and they're all immediately across from the Kent School development, where the shortest tower is 13 stories at the Kent School, and the others are all in the 20s. There's upwards of, I think, 1,000 units going in across the street. The nature of Dufferin agreeing with the objector is that it's a high-traffic street, it's a high volume, and the nature of the development that is desired or good for that area is in fact apartments, exactly like what we've got proposed. And the proximity of 200 meters, I mean, it's well within the range of the 800 meters specified by provincial standard, that it's walking distance to just about anything. The Dufferin Mall, the former racetrack across the street, has any, anything from groceries to hardware to whatever. It's an excellent location to be networked in. So I think that it's totally a reasonable proposal for what's there right now and what's happening to the neighborhood.
Thank you. So we have questions for you.
Yeah, I mean, to the applicant, you noted there was some other development across the street with, you said, 1,000 units of some sort, and you noted 13 stories on another site. Are we dealing with residential zoning here? Are we dealing with, on these, for these precedents? Are we dealing with, is it, I presume, in all fairness, we're dealing with either a hybrid of a commercial residential zoning or a commercial zoning for those, where those developments are being proposed? That said, are there precedents that you brought up today that are located within the residential zone? And I just want to make sure that we're, in all fairness, comparing apples to apples here.
I would say that the zoning across the street, not, certainly not the Dufferin Mall, but the Croatia Street to Bluer was three school campuses, so they were residential zoning. By, since, I mean, the school which had Ursula Franklin Academy in it on Croatia, three-story 1960s school, the Kent School, which was built, I believe, in the teens or the 20s, is the historic building that's being taken care of. And Bluer Collegiate Institute, which was on Bluer, was a separate high school. They were all residential zoning, but they became one site for development. So yes, they've gone through zoning bylaw amendment, official plan amendment, and all of those things. That density is certainly useful to that commercial strip and everything else. But just immediately to the north of us, the pictures that I submitted were for a reason that the committee in 2022 approved five units plus a laneway suite at 997. They approved five units and a laneway suite at 995. And then 993 is already, is no exterior additions, but it's already three units with a basement apartment on the front, you can see from the photo that I submitted. So I think that the entire stretch going to multi-units is certainly, especially because of the traffic and proximity to goods and services, more units are better, and we don't even really show up on the scale from the street because we're the same height as the building that faces the street right now. We're just changing the front of it by adding brick.
Yes, I can see, and also I would see that the whole area is undergoing big changes, and a lot of those property will never remain residential zone. It will be rezoned or if they apply for rezoning, and a lot of existing property probably makes use in that area. So is, whatever label they have right now in the property does not indicate and reflect how fast the changes are, I think, in that way.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, no, let's ask the question first. We do have another question by Mr. Bayet, let's ask a question.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick comment and then a question to follow. One is that I do fully recognize, and I appreciate the lady in opposition, her comments, the tremendous change that she has seen and her family have seen are not trivial. I think that they do mean a lot. However, this is the reality of life, where we're seeing tremendous changes. However, this is the reality of life, where we're seeing tremendous changes happen in the city in general. Having said all of that, I, I think the proposal itself, I don't have objection to it, with the one exception, and that is variance number three. So variance number three is asking for a significant change in soft landscaping. Given that this is going to be a new, a new construction piece, is it not possible to mitigate the, that particular variance? Because at the rear of your property, you have a concrete pad that's fairly large. If that is reduced in size, I think that variance number three may be more palatable, because as it stands right now, I'm not too comfortable with. You're going to have seven units in total, which may be something like 14 people. A little bit more green space, I think, would be, would be beneficial to you, to the residents as such. I'm not quite sure if it's possible for you to look at that and perhaps come up with a different number.
Well, like I say, the, the, the full green space area is under 10 feet by 10 feet in terms of the percentage of the entire site. If there was a narrowed walkway, we could certainly add a percentage or two. We do have an agreement with forestry to be planting in the rear yard. So I would say that we would be creating a lot, a lot of sort of green effect, but if, I can't do a quick calculation.
You know which area I'm talking about? Oh, maybe I'm, I've got the first floor plan.
We can't hear you too well, Mr. Byatt. It's still a little bit, yeah. Can you, yeah, can you repeat that? I can't hear.
Sorry, the concrete deck, which is the first floor, I imagine that's what extends out, and you've got stairs that go underneath presumably to the basement. If that concrete deck is reduced by the amount of space north of the staircase, you can increase the, it's possible presumably to increase the landscaping.
Sure. One, one, a side comment that does relate is that we have under the porches a serious amount of storage space, so that garbage bins and, and recycling bins would be contained within the building as opposed to, as in most cases of these houses parked in the front yard in front of the porch or, or parked in the backyard. So I would actually argue that the, the taking care of, of the, the issues of the building with the garbage is, is a benefit to, to not reducing the landscaping. But if the deck were shortened by a foot, that would add 20% of, of, of green space. The deficiency is 9, 9.07 meters at the moment, with no, no garbage bins or any, any exterior storage.
I'm sorry, I can't understand your answer. What are you suggesting? Sorry.
I'm suggesting if the, if the deck were short, were shortened by one foot, that adds 20 square feet out of the 95 that, so then you're down to, I, I can't convert that quickly.
That's why I got confused. At the moment, if I'm not mistaken, the, you, the required is 85%, which is 76.67, and you're proposing 68.84%, which is 67.6. So if you're going to make change, we need those figures. We cannot just say add another 10%. You have to convert it to, to percentage and also square footage.
I would suggest that the proposed 67.6 meters squared would, could be.
Okay. What do you think if I suggest an increase by, to, to 75% instead of 68?
Could, could I meet you at 70%?
70%? Yeah, that is an increase, well, just a little bit of increase. What, what, what do you think, Mr. Byatt? He, he.
I think you do better.
75? What about, yeah, he wants 75%. How about 75%?
We will make it work.
You will make it work. With 75% per cent, then what, what's square footage will be that, will that be? Let me see, 75%. Okay. 76.67 divided by 0.859. It doesn't make sense. I have, I, oh, yeah, it doesn't, it. In, in fact, I think that the, it's already a 75% because it doesn't, what is calculated is wrong. 68.85% is actually not 67.6 square meter, it is less. I, I think that, Mr. Byatt, do you have a figure? Because I think that there's some mistake already presented here. What I'm saying is that the 68.84 in the notice does not equal to 67.8 upon six anyway. It's 75.
Through you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Sorry, through you, Madam Chair. If variance number three is to be amended, we will need the percentage and meter square from the applicant.
Yes.
So perhaps if, if a little bit of time is needed, if the members wanted a five-minute break at this point.
Figure that out.
We could also do that. Or, or if the applicant has the numbers, if he could present the numbers now.
Yes, that's what I tried to get, but I tried to help on that one. Let me see. But I just discovered the mistake, they already exist, it's already there, that's all. Divided by, okay, 100%, if it's 100%, it's 90.2 times 75. It will be 7. I, I have the answer, but I want to explain the mistake. Yes, it's already, yeah, which is not 68%. It's 75% already they're proposing. That's what I'm trying to, you got the same thing. Mr., Mr. Agent, I, I forgot your name. Can, can I, can I explain to you? You actually proposing a higher percentage already. We discovered that the required is 85% is 76.67. That's correct, that's only required. So you're actually proposing not 68.84. You're proposing 75% already. That's correct, that one.
Okay.
It's, it's at 75%. The square footage is correct, it's 7, 67.6, right? It's, yeah, I'm pretty sure that is correct. Okay, let's amend, could staff, we call this, variance number three is amended, what is proposed is actually 75%, and that is equivalent to 67.6 square meter. Okay. Mr. Byatt, can you, can, can you get that?
And through you, Madam.
Yes.
And through you, and through you, Madam Chair, to the agent, you are in agreeance with amending the variance to correct the percentage.
Yes, I am.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
I still want to increase it.
I, I think, I, I'm quite satisfied, 75%, but then, because they're also planting a tree. But if you want to have an increase, go, go ahead.
No, no, I just, I have more questions.
It depends whether you want to support it, that's all. But then, at the moment, it's, we have to correct the error anyway. Okay. Mr. Byatt, are you catching the, the change?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did, and I was, I must say thank you very much, Chair, for catching that, because it didn't occur to me, my skills aren't as great as yours.
I'm pretty good at that.
I think at 75%, this is much more palatable. And as I mentioned earlier, this is very close to the, a major intersection, public transit, shopping across the road, et cetera, et cetera. This is the nature of Toronto now. So it's a supportable application as amended.
Okay, so are we in committee, we are in committee now? Let's, let's discuss this, yeah. Go, go ahead. We, we hear your comment, Mr. Byatt. We have, we are in committee now, okay.
So if there are no other questions or objection?
Oh, no, I think Jordan has some comment he wants to make.
I, I just have a few comments. It, it seems like there is support for this application to move forward. I personally, I, I do have concerns with the first and second variance. I, I just want to point out just a couple of things. You know, just pull up my notes here. Concerning variance one, you know, I, I take consideration that if we look at the immediate context, that is a row of homes along the stretch of Dufferin Street. The typical home has a two-story front main wall on either side with a front gable roof. It's either a side or a front gable roof. So there, yes, you know, I, I think there was a bit of debate, from what I heard, between the applicant and the, the person that was in opposition, whether or not there's three-story additions on the street. And I hear this come up all the time. I think it would be appropriate, you know, for the record, just to put on the record that, yes, I, I do acknowledge that there are third-story additions, but in a lot of cases, the, in fact, almost all cases on the street, these third-story additions are mitigated by sloped roofs. They're of a considerable degree. And, you know, to make the space, to accommodate that space, you know, you see dormers. In this case, I, I, I don't have any issue with the number of units in the building. In fact, actually, I think that's something that helps me to support the application, seeing that it's providing additional housing. But I do have concern with, frankly, the extent of the third-story addition in combination with the building depth. I think in a lot of cases where there are third-story additions, there is some relief, whether it be an additional setback at the front or a little setback at the rear. And I do acknowledge that there is some setback at the front, but frankly, I think that the applicant could have afforded just a little bit more off the front. And some, as well as some relief on the back, I might add, just given the, the variance for building depth as well. If we look at the built form of this stretch of homes, I don't think any has a third-story addition that extends as far back as this proposes. And I, I, I am a little bit concerned with some of the adjacencies that it creates, given the fact that this is a residential zone, and it is directly adjacent to other residential properties, that, you know, should be afforded, I think, some consideration with respect to the scope of the massing at the rear. So those are my, those are my comments.
Mr., Ms. Ward, question, question, comment?
Yes, I, I have a comment about this. So I think Mr. Allison, I think reiterated some of my comments, but I have a concern with variance number two, especially with the depth, and that, you know, contributes to the overall massing. Like, I have a concern with overall massing of this building, again, especially the third floor addition. There is no setback, there is no mitigation, right? Like, it's, it's flat roof, like one, like huge rectangle, and I think it's imposing, you know, especially if you look at the, you know, neighboring properties. And that's what I would like to see, some kind of mitigation of this massing, and I don't see it at the moment.
Sideback, rear setback, something.
Right, so that's, that's why in this, in the current state, like, in my opinion, I wouldn't be supporting this application.
Okay, yeah. All right, so I can, I can make a few comments on my, I, I do support this application purely because I know, I know the area really well, and it's really going through a lot of changes. And also, these houses have never really been changed so, so much for the last, I don't know, in, in terms of the, it is still residential, but despite that, the whole area is quite unpredictable in terms of the development, the rate of development. And I can support it only because his explanation for variance number one is almost like technical. And also, in this area, every, every, no one, no house is the same as the other house. We cannot have so-called a laboring, aware consistent appearance of these houses, because numerous additions are made to these houses, and, and, and every house is quite, quite close to next, but then it will be different. And you have apartments, you have Bluer Street, you, and, and the thing that I can support this application is that increase the units where we, they are needed, which is good transit, good for single people, small family, U of T, and, and a lot of clubs there, and a lot, it's really very urban. I think that this is a way, unlike what you think that is a residential, this is actually a very dense urban area, and I, I, I don't see that this application is not in line with what's happening in the area. So I'm in support. So that's my comment, and then if we have motion, we, please, go ahead, we should move on, yeah. Mr. Byatt, yeah, Mr. Byatt, I have the hands up. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll move forward with the motion and stay where it lands. I'd like to move a motion to approve the amended application.
And there's a forestry condition too, I think.
Number two, as well as a planning condition. I believe that's the only piece, yeah.
Okay, anyone second? I would second that, yeah. And anyone, all in favor?
Through you, Madam Chair, you would have to abstain to avoid a tie.
But they haven't voted yet, right? I said, oh, have they voted?
Given the, I would move a motion to reject the application.
I think we're dealing with a motion on the floor right now. We have to speak to, so it's.
You dissent, you can dissent, yeah, you both dissent.
Yes.
Okay, so that, that failed, right? Yeah, two, two, I cannot vote either. So it's then, it's actually one to two.
Perhaps a clarifying question for you, Madam Chair. So, I mean, are we supposed to be treating this through a different lens, because, you know, it is a property on Dufferin Street? I, I certainly recognize that the lot's very deep, so I think.
We are in motion, but I can very quickly respond to that. No, I think that everything has to be, read as in the light of, whether it's in line with the official plans, anticipation of the change, whether it's, you know, meet the intent of the bylaw, not the bylaw, but the intent of bylaw. So when we discuss what we, opinions are, we see it as more in, in line with what the development of the area is, whether it's suitable development.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, so, okay, that, that motion failed. Let's have another one.
I, I would like to move a motion to reject this application. And, you know, I, I would suggest that the applicant comes back with the, you know, with okay, so I'll, I'll just finish my sentence with, you know, revised application that takes into consideration the nature of the neighborhood and any, you know, you know, of the comments, you know, mitigation for the massing of the building.
Anyone second?
I'm comfortable seconding that motion.
All in favor? Two, two to one. I refuse. Thank you.
So through the chair for the record, so Member Byatt is dissenting.
Is dissenting.
And you is dissenting and you are abstaining.
I am abstaining from, to avoid a tie, go, yeah. Okay.
Thank you. If staff can please bring Sabrina back.
Yeah, can you, can you bring, yes, Sabrina. Yeah, can you bring, yes, Sabrina Satino back? We are ready for item number three. For item number three, let me read the purpose. Is to alter the existing two-story semi-detached routing by adding, constructing a two-story side addition that including a basement with a front cover porch, abutting the expanding, abutting and expanding the existing front porch. We received a copy of survey site plan for plan elevations, three location photographs of trees and also four photographs of the neighboring properties. Support we received, twenty-five signature petition and of property on St. Mark's and also opposition we received from ten Sun Valley Drive. And we are ready for the agent, yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair, we also have someone online speaking in opposition.
Okay, so you have, you do have opposition, so you might like to give us a presentation, maximum five minutes. You can start anytime now, thank you. And give us your name and address, too.
Okay, I'm the owner of two-two-four St. Max's Road, and my name is Chen Zhi Xiu, C-H-E-N-G-Z-H-I-X-U. And can, please help me to put my architecture plan on the screen. Okay. So the page one, yeah. So my property lots is kind of like a triangle shop. It's got this super-long frontage, but a tiny backyard. But the property land area is about the same as my all other property in this community. So it's just because my frontage is so longer, so that my side setback is 1.5 meters. Why? While all my neighbors in this community are at 0.9 meters, so it's not fair to me. This is the first reason. Can you turn to the second page? Okay, so most of my neighbors around here, the, okay, the addition building I applied, it looks pretty big from the front, but the back of the building is very small. And it's actually smaller than most of my neighbors' addition because they could building on both of the side and the back. My lot length is shorter than theirs, so I have a tiny backyard so that I can only put the addition onto the side. Plus, my addition is not just a simple rectangle shop, makes it less efficiency or layout interior space. Increase the width of the addition would really help improve the layout inside and make better use of the space. And the total floor space index comply with the zoning bylaws, this is the second reason. And next page, please. Yeah, okay, so from the picture, you can see all my neighbors here, they have the side setback of 0.9 meters, according to the bylaw, more than half them in this neighborhood addition on the side and the back of the original building. You can see the original building is the yellow, is, oh, the additional building is the yellow line included in the picture. And a bunch of them get a permit for a minor variance down to the 0.6 meters. So you can see it's very narrow between the lengths, between these two buildings. So for fairness, I'm asking the same 0.6 meter side setback as they have. This is the third reasons. And the next page. Oh, this is just a picture of my design, so existing and addition, so something like this. And the next page, please. Okay, so most of my neighbors around here are supportive of my addition plan this time. So I think I get almost eighty percent of my neighbors supportive. And some neighbors are staying neutral, and there might be one or two neighbors who oppose my plan. So that's all my four reasons, so that I request a minor variance to adjust my property size to 0.6 meters, just for fairness to all my other neighbors. So this is the list of my supporter neighbors. Okay, thank you. This is all my speaker.
Any question to this speaker? No, we have opposition, let's listen to the opposite, right?
Through you, Madam Chair, do you want to hear opposition first before you ask questions?
I think we should hold our question and let's listen to the opposition and we can ask questions.
So we will unmute the resident at ten Sally Sun Valley Drive.
Hello, Alexi, you have been unmuted.
Hello, good morning. Dear members of Committee of Adjustment, my name is Alexi Abilif. I live at ten Sun Valley Drive, just around the corner of this project two-two-four St. Max's Road. And I would like to express my concerns and objections regarding the project of two-two-four St. Max's Road. I believe description of the project does not match the provided drawings, measurements, and that makes the whole project confusing and misleading. The description reads, alter existing two-stories semi-detached dwelling by constructing a two-story side west addition, including basement with a front covered porch. However, if we take a look at project drawings, we can see that the top of the roof is planned at 348 inches, which is 8.8 meters. At the same time, the level of second-floor ceiling is planned of 202 inches, 5.1 meters. So if you do the math, it makes 3.7 meters height for the attic. I strongly believe that we are looking at three-story building, which for some reason is called two-story addition. Also, if we look at the existing building, we can see the same height of the roof. Again, 3.7 meters planned from the existing second-floor ceiling to the top of the roof. This is definitely third floor, which is going to be built on top of the existing two-story semi-detached house. If we take another look at project figures, we can see gables above the second floor on both additions and the existing building, two on the front and one on the back. Those gables are 3.2 meters height and 3.1 meters wide, but they don't have any windows. Does it make any sense? I don't think so. I believe this is obvious, that those gables will make sense only if, only with the windows, which I suspect are planned to be made later on after the approval of the whole project. If that is going to happen, it will disrupt the privacy of my backyard in particular. Although I believe that this project should be rejected due to its misleading concept and inconsistency. I want to be sure that if approved, must be done on the condition that non-windows above the second-floor ceiling will ever be created and that condition should be strictly enforced. Speaking about the overall consistency of the project, I would like to mention the following. I know that the owner collected some signatures in support of this project. He knocked my door as well and tried to convince me to sign in support. He insisted that the addition would not affect my property anyhow, which would probably true if the existing height of the house would have been kept. He showed me some rendering he created, but it was never mentioned the height of new structure. And he never mentioned that it's going to be as high as three-story house. I didn't sign the petition because I wanted to see the actual plan and drawings in addition to renderings. But I guess that a lot of people could have been confused by those renderings and signed for support without realizing that proposed structure is going to be as high as good three-story house. The fact that information about the actual height of new structure was concealed could have misled people. I strongly believe that such practice must not be encouraged by Committee of Adjustment. I believe that project should be rejected on the grounds of non-consistency between description and actual measurements. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any question to this speaker now? Okay, do we have any more speakers?
Through you, Madam Chair, no.
Okay, so, yeah, let's bring back the agent. Can you, first of all, respond to the remark that this last speaker made? And also, later on, we will have question to you, too, okay?
So this is a two-story addition, not three-story. Even in this area, three-story building is allowed by the zoning by law, but my design is two-story. Maybe people think the roof is too high. The reason, I was architecture when I was in Taiwan. I like the European design, like the sharp roof. So my design is forty-five-degree roof, like this. So there are something looks like a small roof here. It's no use, useful for anything, just for the beauty. So this is my opinion. And other thing is it's one unit, not two unit. There are no extra door in the design, you can see it. So only one door into this building. All this building is only the purposes for myself to live in. So this is my answer.
Yeah, actually, I noticed there's only one variance. Yeah, that means that, yeah, they meet other requirement. Any more question to this, to the agent? Are we ready to move into condition? Yeah, please, go ahead now, yeah.
I'm looking at the renderings and, you know, the existing house and the proposed addition and with the, you know, official documents, you're proposing a two-story addition, right? But from what I can see from the 3D visualization, it's not only the side addition. I can see changes to the front of the building as well. So to me, there is a kind of a, you know, discrepancy between what is being proposed and what is being, you know, drawn. So can you, can you please refer to that?
Okay, so actually, the addition is only on the side. And but you can see there is a porch, extending porch. It's, yeah, it's in the front. The position now actually is a driving way, so it's a harder road. It's as for hard road. So no any soft landscaping is changing in the front and in the back, actually. Everything is keep the same, no tree cut, no anything changed in the front and the back. So only on the side. And the porch position is replaced by the original driving, a little part of the driving way. I hope, I hope I explained...
No, it did...
Yeah, sorry, but, you know, what I was asking, like, if we're looking at the front of the house. Now, it's just like, if you, if you look at the proposed addition, we have a gable, right? Like, we have a change on the, on the, kind of, you can say it's not the third floor, but something, right? Like, we have a change to the existing structure as well, and it's not being addressed.
It is in the purpose clause. It did mention the front expansion, front porch. In the purpose clause, I can read it to you. Yeah. Yeah, it did, and also, it's a irregular lot, when they sometimes define this as a little bit, whether it's side or front. The purpose clause is to alter the existing two-story semi-detached routing by constructing a two-story side addition with a front cover porch and abutting and expanding the existing front porch.
It's not, it's not a porch, it's a gable on the third floor.
Yeah, but then it can be a two-story porch.
To my colleague's comment, I think the purpose could have benefited from acknowledging the fact that the roof structure on the entire building seems to be being altered. So that if I understand correctly, the, there is a, there is a new roof proposed, let's call it a half-story on the addition, but it actually, that new roof is actually proposed across the entire building, from my understanding. It's not just a side addition.
Yeah, but we can, we can work on the wording, but sometimes the purpose clause cannot cover everything. It will be very long paragraph. Because the whole application, including all the elevation sessions and site planners, we have received all this information, is also forming part of the application. So to read the application, we have to take in account of all the information supplied. So they are not misleading, they actually stayed where they adding in terms of plans. That's why if we can describe it in one paragraph and understanding all that, then it will be a different, different kind of thing. So you have to look at also others, all the information. That's my opinion, yeah. Do we...
Madam Chair.
Maybe we can ask whether the staff... Mr. Bayat, well, I was going to ask Sabrina whether we can, we should or we can change the clause, the purpose clause to satisfy some members here.
Madam Chair, I may just add, are we in committee or can we have a committee discussion?
We actually, we are actually not into a committee yet, but then this issue has been raised. And then I think the agent actually have described that there is change in the front and also it is a two-story thing. And the issue is that they don't, it seem to be that purpose clause is not covering the whole purpose of the change.
My only observation of this is we've got an application in front of us.
Yes.
Whether the purpose needs to be amended in some fashion or another, it's not a major issue for me. We have one, and only one, variants, as you noted earlier. And the variants is also related to the site-specific circumstance. It's an unusual lot, and every time we have unusual lot, you look at the context. So the variants itself, I have absolutely no concern about. We are not here at this point, he's got no other variants request, no height request, length, depth, nothing. It's just that one.
Yes.
So my sense, focus on the variants at hand, not at the rendering. Set a certain stage later on, presumably he'll come back when they're ready to go.
So you're ready to move this into a discussion now, right? You're satisfied with the presentation so far? Okay, all right.
Absolutely, yeah.
So you have any question to the applicant, please? Mr. Bayat, you have any questions? No?
No, no, no question.
So we are, we are in committee now, so that, all right. So I think that I express myself well also, because it's a way, it's a irregular lot, it's very irregular. It's not even just a little bit tilted. So sometimes it's very hard to even describe what is front, what is side by words. But they do produce good drawings, 3D, and that is an integral part of the application. And that's the integral part of the information they give us. And I have no difficulty understanding that because they do not require any other variances in terms of heights or roof shape or any other, we are looking at one variance. That's why I want to clarify that. Okay, so any comment?
Yeah, and with the, you know, with the variants, and the variances already exist here, can we put in the condition that...
Through you, Madam Chair, sorry, Member Volport, can you speak directly into the mic?
Sorry, you know, with the variants being only one, right, and, you know, a regular site, I was wondering if we can put the condition of, you know, the, you know, actual, the construction being, you know, according to the drawings and as the opposition suggested, no windows on the, you know, third-story dormers?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, I mean, you can impose the condition to tie to any of the drawings that have been submitted. So site plan, elevation plans, we typically don't tie to floor plans.
Okay.
Yeah, you want to tie it to elevations?
Yes.
Oh, which, what, do you know what the drawing that is? Or the, all the elevations?
There are only two, that's it, one second.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any issue tying to the... Yeah, I, I mean, I don't have any issue tying to the, uh, to the site plan.
Site plan?
Yeah. Uh, to Mr. Byatt's comment, uh, I, I think this is a good application. Um, I think it's a, it's a unique lot, I certainly recognize. And I think it's a, it's a good and sensible infill. I think the applicant did a very good job of demonstrating, uh, recent additions that are similar in the neighborhood, two-story additions, side additions, too, I might add. Um, I think it's, yeah, I think it's a good application. Um, I frankly, I, I don't have concern whether or not, uh, you know, there is a, eventually, a, you know, a third story becomes habitable or not, whether or not that triggers variances. The applicant would have to deal with that at the time. If it is an as of right that they're allowed, then I, I, I don't see any impact whether or not there is, uh, you know, that space is occupied. But I will also note that we have to deal with the matter that is before us. And that is, we're dealing with a two-story side addition and a side yard variance, which I, I think meets the four tests.
And then, uh, the drawings that you want to tie?
It's the front and west elevations.
Front and, and, and west, front is, uh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's what is, what's their title, you know, front and west?
It doesn't matter, as long as if the staff can catch what drawings you're talking about. Tabrina, you know the drawings that he's talking about?
Through you, Madam Chair, we can use drawing numbers if, if that.
It's A3.1.
Yeah.
Actually, you know, let's do A3.1, A3, A3.2, and A3.3.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so, uh, it's, it's, I don't think we have a motion yet. Let's make a motion, please. Uh, Mr. Byatt, yes, yeah, you have a motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I, I, I move approval. Uh, I don't have the same, uh, concerns. I'd like, just like to tie it to a site plan rather than, uh, the side elevation. Uh, those elevations may change. And I think it'd be unfair for us to tie it to drawings that may change. What we have before us is, uh, side yard setback. We've got one variance related to a site plan. So I would prefer to tie it to a site plan and not the elevations that have been suggested.
Hmm hmm. So, okay. Your mo- your motion is approved, but tied to the site plan, that's the motion, okay, right? Okay, anyone second to that motion, please?
Uh, I'll second, but if I may add, just if we can include the language substantially in accordance with.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's always the, the phrase, right? Okay, um, that, we have a motion, uh, we have someone second, and let's, who, uh, yeah, all in favor? You, uh, you dissent?
Yeah, somehow, yeah.
Oh, there, Ms. Wolpert's dissent, it's, uh, three to one, approved, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
With that condition, okay.
Through you, Madam Chair, just questioning, do we want to take a five-minute break?
Yes, please, yeah.
Okay, we'll break for five minutes.
Yes.
And then we'll proceed with item number four, and I think we can deal with five at the same time. Okay.
Okay. Well, we, are we doing four, five together or? Yeah, yeah, yeah. And let me see how many more cases we, that we, in this way, we, we, because the way we do it, you don't know how many more cases. Because you, some of, some of. Yes, six. Also, it's in a form, okay. Also, twelve.
A long afternoon.
Okay.
To your comment about the purpose, hundred percent should have included the. No, no, it's, that's a substantial component. You're, you're literally replacing the whole roof structure of the building. No roof in that purpose.
No, I understand you can apply, you know, these from the drawings.
The mic off.
Yep, yep, yep.
Yeah, thank you for it.
Unmute, unmute.
Yeah. Uh, make sure it's all muted. Make sure it's muted.
Unmuted, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I get really nervous with that, because when you do change the purpose, then you have to restart the roof to notice.
No, it's, it's a bit.
Neighbor turns up and says.
You have to be clear about what you're doing, otherwise.
And as a neighbor, I might be, there wasn't given the purpose. You showed up, the roof came off the whole house, and you had a half story, probably a half story. Mic's off. Well, better than.
Just make sure they're off. Yep.
You know what? Better practice, just then. We have a, we have a chambers in, um, in North York, we've got in the back. We have over a ten.
Is it nicer?
The, the room's nicer, I, but the.
Through you, Madam Chair, are we ready to proceed? Okay. Everyone, if members can just turn on your videos.
Yes.
Through you, Madam Chair, do you have your mic on? Sorry.
Okay, thank you. I, well, yeah, it, it's the same, I thought I can hear. Anyway, yeah, uh, it's item number four, and we're going to, uh, hear it at the same time with item number five, right? Yes, and number four is 502 Atlas Ave- Avenue, and number five with the same address, uh, 502 Atlas Ave- Avenue. The purpose for.
Through you, Madam Chair, item number four, yes, it's under 502 Atlas Avenue, also, uh, known as 661 Winona Drive.
Winona Drive, to, yeah, on, yeah, yeah, it's on the other side, yeah. So the purpose for, um, uh, this, uh, application is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling with a front porch and a front, uh, basement walkout and a rear grand foredeck and a rear first-story balcony. This dwelling will contain a total of three residential units. Here, we have, uh, received a copy of survey site plan, four plan elevation, eighteen photographs of tree, uh, of the property, covering letter from, uh, Christian Chan, the agent, and, uh, various decision affecting the property and a local, uh, appeal body T-Labs decision, upwards report, um, planning rationale by the agent. We received comment from, uh, uh, transportation engineering, uh, and urban forestry, from also metro links advisory, I think advisory, um, comments. Opposition, we have numerous, uh, opposition from, uh, from, on Atlas, uh, Avenue, uh, and, uh, there were, uh, there's, uh, five addresses and more addresses on, um, Atlas, uh, uh, Avenue. And I think on, uh, item number five is the same purpose, is building a three-story, uh, detached house. And we receive, uh, a copy of survey site plan, four plan and elevation, six photographs of the trees, and covering letter by the agent and, uh, decision affecting the property and T-Labs decision. Upwards report, uh, report and person, um, and planning rationale from the agent. We also received comment from transportation and also tri- uh, uh, urban forestry. We have numerous, um, opposition on, uh, on the same, uh, street and in, and that's it.
Through you, Madam Chair, uh, we do have the agent online that's speaking for both applications.
Yes.
Uh, and we do have one speaker in opposition for item number four.
Hmm hmm.
And one speaker in opposition for item number five.
Okay.
So at this time, we'll unmute the agent?
Yes, Miss, uh, yeah, Mr. Chan, um, since you have some opposition, uh, we would like you to give us a presentation, uh, five minutes. Um, maybe if you're speaking for, for two items, maybe you can, you know, uh, have a little bit more time. I give you more time for two items.
Madam Chair, good morning. My name is Christian Chan, I'm the lead news planner and agent for the owners of both applications 502 Atlas Avenue Limited. My address is Suite 138157, Adelaide Street West, Toronto, Ontario. Uh, so thank you, um, the application we can consider jointly. Um, the properties were previously before the committee adjustment and also with a T-Lab approval from 2022. And those applications were to facilitate the development of two new detached homes on the severed lots. The severed and the retained lots have since been registered with the registry, or now both exist as legal lots. Prior to the application being filed, I discussed the proposed triplexes with, uh, Mr. Williamson of Community Planning, uh, who noted no concerns with the application for the triplex developments on the created lots. Um, I also note that Transportation Services has supplied a report to remove the curb cuts because the driveways are now being eliminated in this proposal. And the application would also be subject to forestry conditions should it be approved. Um, I had emailed residents, uh, originally filed objection letters that appeared as part of the T-Lab appeals, the first application for the single detached homes and the severance. And, uh, I understand there are objections to the new proposed triplexes, triplexes due to the letters, uh, that are appeared in the AIC. Uh, the issues that I noted were lot size, landscaping setbacks, perceived impacts of privacy, noise, and parking availability, which I'll, uh, respond to in my rebuttal. Just to move on to the proposal, um, the proposed triplexes, um, are of the exact same building dimension, outward building dimensions and massing as what was previously approved by the T-Lab. So basically, what's happened in this application is that the former single detached homes have now been configured internally with the integral garages removed to have three units in each building. And since the application was dealt with by the T-Lab in November 2022, in May 10th, on May 10th, 2023, the city amended the zoning bylaw and official plan to prevent multiplex housing in neighborhoods with bylaws 473, 2023, and 474, 2023. So pursuant to those OPAs and ZBAs that permit multiplexes in neighborhoods and in residential zones, uh, my client seeks to increase the housing options in the neighborhood and desires to develop the properties with triplexes. Uh, it's important to note that multiplexes are designed to provide housing options for all types of households, including families with children and other multi-member households. So all the proposed dwelling units are family-sized units, and triplexes are a permitted building type in the RM zone in which the property lies. Just also like to note that the property is within city council-approved site and area-specific policy 6716, which is the Eglinton West Protected Major Transit Station area, which provides a minimum density of 0.5 FSI for three dwelling units. So, the new triplex proposal, the reason why we're before the committee again today is because as the triplexes, as the buildings are now, as triplexes instead of single-family detached homes, it was necessitated to undergo another zoning review for each of the triplexes as the variances for the single detached homes, even though they are the same outward, you know, form, could not be carried forward for triplexes and proceed directly to building permit. So in comparison of the T-Lab-approved variances and the proposed variances for the triplexes before us today, I provided a chart starting on page four of my planning rationale, uh, that explains, uh, these, uh, variances. So with respect to lot area and lot frontage, uh, in the immediate context, there are thirty out of seventy-two lots, or forty-one, uh, forty-one point seven percent that have a lot area of less than two hundred meters squared. This represents a single largest group of lots numerically and the prevailing, prevailing lot size. With regard to floor space index, there's no longer a variant. With regard to floor space index, there's no longer a variance required as it is compliant with bylaw 474-2023, the multiplex bylaw. But also just to note too that the GFA, although not a variance, and the FSI, although not a variance, has increased because of the removal of the integral garage in the original proposal for the single-family detached homes and converting it to floor area. There is no longer any exterior main wall height variance as from the original proposal. The front yard setback is exactly the same as what was previously approved by T-Lab and Committee of Adjustment. The rear yard setback variance is exactly the same as what was proposed and approved by the COA and the T-Lab in the single-family detached proposals, the north and south yard setbacks. So actually, the north yard setback is the same, the south yard setback has actually been improved and increased from 0.62 to 0.92. The rear platform encroachment has decreased from zero, from 5.03 to 4.51, so it approaches less. And the rear platform that's higher than the first story in this instance is 2.69 meters. And it wasn't a variance that was identified previously, but in this zoning review it was. However, once you go over to the rear elevation drawings, A2.2, the size of the platform is in the exact same position and the exact same size that was previously proposed and approved by T-Lab. The rear canopy encroachment is a new element at 3.91 meters because this is a canopy that projects over the rear entrance. For one of the triplex units, in my opinion, the impacts of that proposed canopy are minor as it is a subordinate element to the entrance to the rear yard. With respect to 502B Atlas Avenue, I'll just speak to the variances that are not the same as the previous single-family detached proposal. Those being the front platform encroachment, and this is the same as for 502A. The proposed front platform encroachment has increased over the previous proposal by 0.15 meters, fifteen centimeters. This is resulting from the redesign of the front entrance porch to accommodate triplex entrances, including the basement unit entrance. This is also subordinate element to the building massing. The rear platform encroachment is the same as the previous proposal on 661 Winona Drive. The rear platform encroachment higher than the first story is also the same. Actually, it's 2.07 meters into the rear setback. So although there is a change in the variances, numerical dimensions, and having the appearance to be a large variance for rear platform encroachment, the variances relate to a small platform with a depth of 1.067 meters and a width of approximately two meters for a platform area of 2.6 meters. So in fact, if you can go to rear elevation drawing A2.2 for 661 Winona Drive, the rear yard platform's actually been repositioned further away from the side lot line of the previously proposed single detached home. With respect to the rear canopy encroachment for 661 Winona, there are new elements in the application, again, as these canopies are covering the front and rear entrances for the triplex units. And in my opinion, the impact of these proposed canopies are minor. With respect to the front yard landscaping, although the variances required were in fact providing increased square meterage of front yard and rear landscaping is compliant, but the front yard landscaping is in fact increased over the previous proposal. The previous proposal had 17.35 square meters versus 19 square meters in the triplex proposal because of the removal of the driveway. So with respect to the four tests, the proposal will maintain appropriate spacing, servicing, and amenity areas. The triplex proposals seek almost the exact same footprint and height as the previous detached home proposals. There are no additional impacts arising from the zoning standards. The overall intent and purpose of the bylaws, including the multiplex wise, is to achieve low-rise, low-scale residential development that is orderly, contextually suitable, and in my opinion, satisfied. And just so I can have a little bit of indulgence with respect to my conditions. So on page 10 of the planning rationale, I list the conditions that are replicated from the T-Lab decision for 502A and 502B Atlas Avenue. And those that the proposed dwelling shall be constructed substantially in accord with the site plan and elevations. And that for 502A, that a new fence shall be installed on the north and south lot lines. And that number three, a complete application for permit to inter remove the city-owned and privately-owned trees per Minnesota Code Chapter 813. And those conditions are for both obligations. And thank you, and should you have any questions, please, please feel free to ask. Thank you.
So we wait until, yeah, until we listen to the opposition, we come back to you for questions.
Through you, Madam Chair, then we will move on to the first opposition speaker online. And they reside at 504 Atlas Avenue. Okay. Joseph Heel.
All right, this is Joseph Heel at 504 Atlas Avenue, which is the property just immediately to the north of the proposal. I would encourage the committee to take a step back and to consider that we are going from right now, a property with a single modest bungalow on the entire property to now two triplexes that would have, you know, as you know, an additional twelve or more residents just in the property just south of us. I just can't believe that this is consistent with the modest intensification that is the intention of the multiplex amendment to the official plan. I've outlined, and we've heard from many other residents in the neighborhood, specific objections to the requested variances, which it does include the lot size, rear and side setbacks. But ultimately, I think that that's the reason why, you know, this proposal needs to come back to committee for triplexes. Because even though the built form on the outside is the same as the applicant has stated, because ultimately, they can be summarized to say that there is a significant difference in the type of use of the specific features that are being requested than would be for a single detached home. So specifically, if we think about the use of the backyard as well as the rear platforms with respect to noise and privacy concerns, it's very different if it's a single family, you know, using that specific space. But, you know, specifically, when I think about the rear platform in a contained unit, that could be the primary space where they would enjoy the outdoors. And in that case, obviously, there's going to be, there's going to be a significant impact to the privacy as well as potentially to noise on both the Atlas side, which we directly looking into our house, as well as on the Winona side, which would be coming to, which would have a direct view into our backyard. You know, there's also been several objections that I've seen with respect to different letters about parking on the street, which is a major concern both on Atlas Avenue and on Winona. It would considerably add to the already, you know, increased congestion on the street with the addition of so many vehicles. It is definitely true that there are other multiplex, other multiplex suites within the area. But as can be seen from, from all of those, the lot size is significantly larger as well as there is additional infrastructure with respect to laneway parking and, you know, just greater, you know, infrastructure in general. So I think, you know, really, in summary, this in no way should be considered modest intensification. In my view and in the view of many of the residents that submitted objection letters, this is extreme intensification, extremely abruptly, and does not serve the interests of the neighborhood nor of the greater public in the city of Toronto. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, can we have the agent back to the-
But through you, Madam Chair, we do have one other opposition speaker. And so we will unmute the resident at 501 Atlas Avenue.
Please, yes.
Hello, Charlie, you have been unmuted.
Yeah, my name's Charlie McGuire. I live at 501 Atlas. I'm just participating to agree with Joseph. This block is all single-family residential homes. And its parking is already congested as it is. And at the pretense, when they first applied for this, it was to be single-family homes. And I believe that's how they, they've got through with their subdividing of the lots. And now they've changed it to intensify the amount of people that are going to be on the street and the parking. So I, I just want to just agree with what Joseph said. And I believe all the people on the street concur with this from my understanding. I have no problem with somebody building a single or family home on this lot. I wish them all the best, but I think that, like, building with this many people, adding this many people with no parking and, like I said, no, I don't know, like, privacy for people that do live right immediately close to them, which I'm about three or four hours away. I just wanna, I just don't think this is a good idea. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. So the next speaker?
Through you, Madam Chair, we can now go back to the agent.
Oh, yeah, let's bring back Mr. Chan, Mr. Chan, I mean. Can you respond to the comments that we, please? It seems that is to do with the multiplex and also the concern about parking.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, and I thank the surrounding members for their comments. With respect to the number of units in the triplex and intensification, is that there are two elements to this. One is that the city has amended the official plan in the zoning bylaw in May 2023 to permit up to four dwelling units in all our zones and neighborhood areas. So the maximum permitted number of units is actually four, whereas three units are proposed for each building. The second element is that the property is within the Eglington West Protected Major Transit Station area or SASP 716. And in this case, any development in the neighborhoods has to have a minimum density of 0.5 times FSI, which is certainly the existing character of the areas below that. Or, and this is one of the notes that's contained within the SASP 716 policy, a minimum of three dwelling units, and this proposal achieves that for each of the lots. So in fact, this is an area that has been slated and approved by City Council for modest intensification within the walking distance of a major transit station, that being Eglington West. With respect to parking impacts, this ties into that as well because I do realize that the parking integral garages and the parking spaces for the single detached homes are now removed. With regards to parking impacts, the city had amended the zoning bylaw on February 3rd, 2022 through bylaw 892022. And this removes the minimum parking space standard for all low-rise forms of residential development citywide. So in fact, despite that there is a perceived parking impact, there is no minimum parking requirement for the proposed triplex units and no variance that is required for minimum parking spaces. As there are no variances for parking, there aren't many Section 451 tests to consider regarding impacts to parking supply and traffic in this area. And again, I reiterate, this is within a major transit station area. And the number of units and the parking impacts are considered in proximity to transit. I understand Mr. Heel's concerns with overlook and privacy from the platforms. The platforms are no different than what was previously proposed on the third story for the single-family detached applications and no larger. They're off the bedrooms and are not intended to be used as a social space and they probably couldn't fit more than one or two people on them anyways. A mitigative measure that I could recommend for the committee to impose is a condition for the requirement of opaque privacy screening of at least 1.5 meters height on the north and south sides of the proposed platforms. I do also note that platforms for 661, for the 661 Winona development is actually proposed to be farther away from the side lot lines, as I previously mentioned, and therefore, more of a mitigation of impact of what was previously proposed. As for the built form, the massing has no more impact than the previously approved single detached homes. The outward dimensions are exactly the same, the height. In fact, the main wall height variance that was originally proposed in the single-family detached homes has now been eliminated. So there's a reduction in the impact of the massing of main wall height towards the side lot lines. In terms of landscaping, I understand in a phone call with Mr. Heel, there was some concern about soft landscaping. And in order to address that, as I've mentioned before, the soft landscaping is actually increased in square meterage, even though the variances required for the percentage because the driveways are now removed. In the conditions that were imposed by T-Lab do require the implementation of tree planting on the side lot lines, which I have it in my planning rationale to maintain in order to address what was discussed at T-Lab amongst the parties. So the city committee, I recommend the committee of adjustment to impose the exact same conditions. And with respect to setbacks, there's no change to proposed building footprints except for a reduction for 502 Atlas Avenue by a foot, an improvement. The number of residents with respect to noise, the maximum number of dwelling units is regulated at four units of each lot in the neighborhood. And in fact, by law 474-2022, as you can see on the location map here, each of those buildings to the north of the subject property that are the split lots, if they were constructed before May 23rd, 2023, they can have an as-of-right conversion to a triplex or a fourplex without the need for variances. So the number of residents that can occur on this block or any of the homes in the immediate or context or broader context can be proposed with a triplex or fourplex if that building legally existed prior to May 23rd, 2022. And thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Yes, actually, I do want to clarify one thing. You did mention that you could propose some privacy screen. I miss all the detail. Can you give me where you're proposing the privacy screen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you could turn to the elevations.
No, you just have to describe to me because if you're going to, yeah. Is, what, a walk floor?
Yes.
Yeah.
Conditions would be all upper story platforms.
Okay.
Should have opaque privacy screening of a minimum 1.5 meters height.
Yeah, okay.
Along the north and south sides.
North, that's, and south, that's, okay, thank you. I got that now, all right, thank you. Okay, okay, we, thank you for the comments and we might have questions for you. Any questions? Ms. Byatt, Ms. Walbert?
Let's go to Mr. Byatt first.
Yeah, he has his hand up. Mr. Byatt, yeah. We cannot hear you, your music. Turn on your mic, yes.
Thank you, I was actually just resting my chin. I didn't have a question, but I do remember this application thing before us previously when it, I can't remember how many variances were requested. Only one was accepted and nine or ten refused, so it's come back. And at that time, there were two single-family dwellings, one on each side of, one on Winona and one on Atlas. And then, and I take to heart the comments that the agent has made that the city allows for a triplex structure like this in this neighborhood. This is again, one of those difficulties that we actually to establish neighborhoods have a certain pattern.
Mr. Byatt, sorry, can I, can I stop? Just want to have the procedure. Are we asking questions or are we in discussion? I think that we, now we should ask questions and then we will be in discussion and then you can make all the comments. What do you think? Let's wait, see whether there are questions first. Any questions? Let's wait, see whether there are questions first, any questions?
I think that would be.
Yeah.
Oh. Uh, I have a question with regards to rear yard platform encroachment. Uh, you mentioned that there are no, um, you know, the changes from the previously approved. But I can see that there is an increase in encroachment for uh, six sixty one Winona Drive for the rear yard. It went from one point two to two zero or seven. Can you address that?
Yes, if I can ask staff to turn over to site plan A zero point one for the six six one Winona Drive plans. And if you could zoom in a bit, that would assist. So the rear platform encroachment, so what has happened with the lot split, and you can see the severance line there, is that when there's an encroachment into a rear, a required rear setback, the rear setback required in our zone is seven point five meters. So with the uh, proposed platform, it's already within the required setback, you can see the line at the bottom of the screen that says seven seventy five hundred required setback. So when there is a platform that's already, the built form is already within the setback. And when there's a rear platform that projects even further into it, already within the limit distance, the variance is triggered. This platform, although it appears as a variance, it's three point eight nine meters. It's for that main floor platform for the rear entrance, you see that little triangle that indicates the entrance, three point eight three point eight nine meter dimension line is to the uh, the east edge of the platform, the front porch stairs, you see the four stairs going up to it on the main floor going into the entrance, so therefore the variance is required for that specific element on the ground floor. And because that element is on the ground floor, it's a ground, it's an entry porch for the rear unit that in my opinion, um, that this variance has no, if not a minimal impact onto the adjoining properties because it is a subordinate element for an entrance access to the rear, the rear entrance to the rear unit.
So I understand it, it was just triggered by the need to access the new newly designed unit, correct?
Yes, because there is a platform in the entrance and there's a canopy over it that projects into the into the rear yard setback.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
But I do like to note that it doesn't take away any of the soft landscaping space in the rear yard that meets the requirements for rear soft landscaping.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Allison.
I add a technical question, uh, do you know the height of the platforms, are they both the same? Uh, just more or less height off of grade, uh, and I'm looking, I my question pertains actually to both platforms. Um, and then I have an additional question with respect to the adjacent garage uh, on the neighboring property. I just wanna, I I'm curious to know like what the adjacency condition is there with respect to the height of the platform versus the height of the garage. And I'm mainly, my concern mainly has to do with some over like overlook and privacy. It 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 seems that the garage may already be doing what a privacy screen is intended to do.
Sorry, sorry.
My question, the height of the platforms, each of the platforms, what is the height off of grade?
Answer that first.
Okay.
Yeah, because otherwise we got distracted from the question. Okay, Mr. Chen, you know the question, right? Just want to know the height of those platforms, yeah.
So line on elevation I am P two point one, I'm just doing the quick calculation now. Has the levels above grade are indicated, and the level at front ground floor platform is zero point nine one meters, so ninety one centimeters.
Okay, yeah, that that's the front, uh, the rear?
Yes, and the rear, just a moment, if you can just bear with me, thank you for your patience, the rear platform. Is the same, ninety one centimeters. And just a note too, that the maximum permitted height of a front platform entrance is one point two meters, so it complies with the bylaw for the maximum permitted uh, front entrance height of one point two meters.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, so any more questions? Uh, or to the previous speaker or any, okay, we we don't seem to have any more question now, we are in committee. Okay, um, Mr. Byatt, you were making comment first before it got interrupted, you can continue, yeah.
That's okay, I think I I think agents answered most of them, but uh, in general, I think this is quite an improvement in in one way, I'm sure for the neighbors, it doesn't appear to be an uh, an improvement, it's a triplex instead of a single family home. But as I mentioned, that's part of the nature of change, the city changing so dramatically. Um, given all the app, all the variances that will be forced, um, I don't believe there are any that have a serious issue, I think it's a supportable application.
Okay, thank you. Any comment, I I have a couple of comments. My comment is is actually, I be when when I see the the applicant has actually taken something that in terms of massing, in terms of height and and size been approved by T-Labs. And then he says so taking advantage now, this bylaws only uh, is changed, the official plan is changed for the whole area for modern intensification, allowing even four units. And I think that that he's just responding to the what the city is seeing for the area with the new transit way, with 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 actually two transit way probably in the same area. And I think this is an excellent response to what we call the mid um, missing middle. Because you know why, because he's not minimizing, talk about the number of units, but he actually produced quite good sized apartment. And it's very seldom you can find a two bedroom good size uh, you in the in a low rise in this area, and it's new. And I think that it probably a a supplier way quality type of housing. Uh, uh, and because uh, single family housing in in that size, you you have to either own a house before or you are million, multimillionaire to get it. So I think that this is providing, so got the the city is actually putting a lot of emphasis to improve the situation of the middle uh, missing, with what do you call that, missing middle? Yeah, yeah, so I think this is a great response to that.
Madam Chair, if I may, I I would agree, I would support both comments that I've heard today. I think this is an excellent example of what the city calls missing middle. Um, and I I, you know, it's it's interesting from a, from a, from a design, you know, or actually from a planning perspective, because these are two buildings that were initially proposed to single family homes. They still look like from the street, single, like detached, single family dwellings. And I think um, this is a project that uh, is uh, successful in the way that it it really has uh, exhibited um a sensibility to um, both the massing, uh, the layout. You know, we're not looking at box structures here, there's there's obviously some consideration that has been made with respect to the entrances, the windows, the platforms. I I don't have the same, share the same concerns that were addressed by the neighbors with respect to onlook. I don't see any large platforms, I see a small platform in the second story. I note that it is off of a of a bedroom space, so it doesn't, it it doesn't, uh, and I should also add that the the area of that platform is within the the bylaw. Um, so no concerns there. Um, I also don't have concern with the platforms uh, at the ground level, just seeing as that they they aren't elevated platforms. They don't pose significant onlook and privacy issues. And I I want to be mindful of, you know, I I think a lot of consideration from the applicant has been given to this project. And I just want to be mindful about imposing one and a half meter privacy screens on all of the decks, because I I think that does affect the design, and I I think sometimes, you know, privacy screen in some cases may be warranted, but in some cases it there also is an unintended consequences that are created by privacy screens. In this case, I I don't feel like privacy screens are really help to mitigate any any uh, onlook or privacy issues uh, really that are there to begin with.
I have to warn you about taking that off, only because in one of the opposition did mention privacy issue, and also the applicant himself is proposing it.
They offered, yeah.
In terms of maybe we do not need to interfere with that that that.
That process, yeah.
Uh, uh, they agree, and then also, don't forget, he's just proposing the size, not.
Just the size, and I will note that the the platforms aren't very big to begin with, so therefore lead me to believe that the privacy screens are not going to be very large as well.
Agree with you about sometimes by building and of five feet, uh, or five foot fence is actually quite imposing.
It could be, yeah.
If if they they not want it, that's fine, but it seems that they seem to have.
I I will note this, so on one of the applications, because we're dealing with a severance, a consent applicant, a former consent application, I should say, and we the both buildings have very limited building depths, I will note that the the property on uh, the side with the where the adjacent neighbors have the primary residence, because the building depth is so minimal in comparison to the adjacent properties, I I still question whether or not a privacy screen would be warranted on on that specific property, just given that the side main walls of both adjacent properties extend far beyond the building. Uh, and in a way, the built form, I should say, the proposed built form, the condition there really is it creates a sort of courtyard in in itself naturally, right, through the through the figure and ground contact. So I may support privacy screens on the on the new, on the new side, I believe that's the Winona Drive, but I believe it I'm just gonna pull up the site plan. Uh, so, yeah, it would be the side on Winona Drive, I I could see where there could be some overlook and privacy.
What, you have to have precise wording, we cannot go
But I if you, I mean, I I love to support both, but I just question whether or not it's needed or it's required on the Atlas Avenue side, given that the both buildings on either side extend far beyond. I don't see how there's any privacy or onlook there for with respect to platforms, but um
We can ask the applicant whether you're proposing just on the Atlas side property, um, not the Winona one. So it is, it's agreeable to him, can we bring back, bring back Mr. Chen?
Through you, Madam Chair, we'll come out of committee.
Yes, just ask this, his opinion on this, about the privacy screen.
Yes, Madam Chair, and thank you for the comments, and I believe that there shouldn't be any issues if there were to be a condition imposed for the privacy screening for the upper level platforms.
On on one house, not both houses, they 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 don't think that you need it on the Adnys Avenue property, you may need, you only need it on the Winona side because it's facing the someone's backyard.
Yes.
Okay. You agree to that? Okay, because we have to move on.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you.
Did you see the condition I'm talking about?
Okay, I I can, I, yes, I I, okay, we understand now we need a motion, Mr. Byatt, motion or anyone want a motion? To move both?
Yeah, we are moving both.
Yes, except the condition for the privacy screen only applies to the one on Adnys Av- Avenue, not the other one.
Through you, Madam Chair, can we go item by item?
Yes.
Just to make it clean.
Okay.
So item number four.
Okay.
Right, is five oh two Atlas Avenue, also known as six six one Winona Drive?
Yes.
Okay, can we get a motion for that?
Mr. Byatt's got motion, yes.
Yeah, I have a motion.
Yeah.
Um, and I believe there's a condition, number two, forestry number two attached. Um, there aren't any other official um, conditions. And this is the one that you're talking about for the screening.
Yes.
Privacy screening.
Yes.
So that would be the decision that privacy screening be provided on the rear upper deck. On, uh, I believe it would be the north and south sides.
Yes.
Through you, Madam Chair, I believe there's also a condition imposed from Transportation Services.
Yes, it's some kind of restoring the driveway, there's a transportation condition, yeah.
I promise.
Yeah, and transportation, okay. You got the, we go on motion, uh, second, please. Mr. Mr. Allison, second, please. Uh, all in favor to with condition?
I might add, do we need to note the height of the privacy screen?
One is
One point five meters.
One point five from the deck, yeah, usually.
Yes, I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor approve unanimously with condition. So second is item number five, um, we need a motion for that too, yeah. This one does not have the privacy screen, but I think they also, does it have the transportation?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, that's what I see.
And Forest Street as well, but number one.
Yeah, and Forest Street.
Through you, Madam Chair, we need a motion.
Yes, Mr. Byatt, are you making a motion for that, yeah, he's making a motion for that.
I'll do that. So we've got uh, forestry condition number one and the transportation condition.
Yes.
Uh, beyond that, no other conditions, and I move to approve.
Second to
Second.
Mr. Allison, second, all in favor? Yes, approve with unanimously approve, yeah, with conditions, okay, next.
Madam Chair, we can proceed with our next held item, item number six, for Bearsford Avenue.
Yeah, and for this, we, the purpose for this application is to construct a new three story detached droughting with a second uh, drought, uh, droughting unit in the basement, a front porch with a canopy above and a front two story bay window, and the front third story deck on the roof of the second floor, second story below. A rear cover porch and a rear basement walkout with terrace and a third floor story balcony, the existing one story detached droughting will be demolished, and the existing front yard parking pad will be maintained. We received site, survey site plan and elevations, five photograph of trees and presentation material from agent. We received comment from Urban Forestry, and we received support of number uh, uh, number six, number six, Bearsford Avenue, we are ready for the agent.
Through you, Madam Chair, we do have the agent online as well as one registered speaker.
Okay.
In opposition online.
Okay.
We will unmute the agent at this time.
Yes.
Hello, John.
Yeah, give us your name and address, and you do have one opposition, so you would you like to give us a presentation for five minutes, thank you.
Sure, thank you, good morning, Madam Chair and committee panel members, my name is John Goulding at two four five Besborough Drive, I'm an agent for the owner residing at the subject address. If we could go to slide one, please.
We can't hear you, let's wait, we we Yes.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, okay, because some noise in the corridor, we tried to, yeah, this, okay, maybe we can start the clock.
Could we reset the five minute clock?
Yeah, we're going to start the clock again, yeah. We're going to start the clock again, yeah.
And could we pull up slide one?
Slide one, yeah.
Slide one of the presentation material. So it's the, it's the photos.
It's not this one?
It's in the supplemental package.
No, those are not my files, they may be for
Through through you, Mrs. Chair, when were these submitted?
Is it the supplemental, I I have a note here, they have a presentation in the supplemental package.
That's right, they're posted on the planning portal. These slides are not, yeah, there we are, that's that's it. Okay, um, good to go?
Yes, we we set the clock too, okay, let's go.
All right, thank you so much. So um, this project is being undertaken by the residing owner of the So this project is being undertaken by the residing owner of the property. They've lived there for about seven years, and this project is in order to accommodate their growing family, including the addition of their senior age parents. As you can see from the architectural plans and on file in this slide, the plan is to replace the existing old wood frame bungalow with a new three-story detached house while maintaining the existing legal front yard parking path. If we could go to slide two. There we go. The proposed house is typical of the revitalization on this street and in the neighborhood, where as this slide shows, small bungalows are being replaced with two and three-story infill homes. Slide three, please. These built projects shown here and many more on this block and in the immediate area required and receive planning support and committee approval. If we could just go back to slide one again. So this is the existing bungalow and the proposed infill house. So the owner has actually gone door to door to the neighbors to discuss with them the plans to rebuild, and there were no objections indicated. As you mentioned, Madam Chair, there's a letter of nonobjection on file for the next-door neighbor number six. As of this morning, we are aware of an opposition letter or opposition by the residents association. We are not aware of what their concerns might be, as their opposition was only made aware perhaps a day or perhaps at the most two days before today's hearing. So the owner has not been provided an opportunity to have a constructive conversation with them. Furthermore, there's no planning staff report or concern. From our research, the variances being requested today are the same type and consistent with or in fact even less ambitious than variances previously granted for other built projects. This would seem to establish this application as having variances that are minor in nature, are desirable and appropriate development, and maintain the general intent of the bylaw and the official plan. And furthermore, in keeping with the evolving character of this neighborhood, especially being that it is only a few blocks from the blower corridor. With the remaining time, I could speak to a few key variances that may be benefit from some clarification. If we could go to slide four, please. So this is speaking to variance number six, south side yard setback. So the slide shows eight other approved smaller or similar side yard setbacks typically where the subject sidewall and the neighbor sidewall face each other in close proximity. The proposed side, south side setback here is not in close proximity to the neighboring houses to the south, as it faces onto the neighboring rear yards of the neighboring houses which face onto Morningside Avenue around the corner. It's worth noting that the proposed south side yard setback of about 13 inches is much greater than the existing south side yard setback of less than one inch. The proposed north side yard setback complies. If we go to slide seven. So this is variance number nine, front yard soft landscape percentage. So the proposal is for 45% soft landscape. This slide shows four other approved softscape variances on the same block as a subject property, which are similar to or even less than the 45% being requested. It is worth noting that the permeable portion of the legal parking pad actually increases the effect of front yard softcape to 60%. However, the bylaw does not recognize softscape in a parking space, even though it contributes to the intended purpose of needed soft landscape for the environment and specifically water infiltration. If we could then go to slide five. This speaks to variance number four, building depth. We have an excess building depth of 27 inches, which is 0.69 meters greater than the 17-meter limit. The slide shows the proposed building is setback an additional 1.36 meters or about four and a half feet from the minimum required front yard setback. This keeps the new house and porch in line with the existing house and porch, thereby preserving the street line and the existing parking pad. Therefore, the house, which is actually legal length, extends the 0.69 meters beyond the 17-meter limit. Regardless, this small variance in the rear yard does not trigger other variances that are often related with excessive size buildings.
Yeah, your five minutes is up, so do you, do you have a lot?
I'll finish in a few seconds. So this this does not trigger any other associated variances like rear yard setback, hard scape variances, or excess building depth.
Okay, thank you, yes.
Okay.
Through you, Madam Chair, we'll hold questions until we hear from opposition. Okay, so we have one opposition speaker online, Nicholas Singh, you've been unmuted.
Hello, Nicholas, you have been unmuted.
Yes, my name is Nicholas Singh, and I'm attending the Swansea area rate pairs.
Yeah, you have five minutes.
Okay, well, good afternoon, Chair and members. The rate pairs have no opposition to the land use and redevelopment, and we are always willing to speak. We've been here for 90 years, so we're willing to engage with anyone who wants to knock on our door. As to the evolving nature, it's okay for having an evolving nature, as long as the variances that have been requested to the bylaws are in keeping with the requirements of the official plan, which in this case they are not. With this application, we are looking at a new build that is not confined by the old structure, so this building should be able to be, if not in compliance, at least closer to the new bylaws. Developers used to come to these hearings and complain that the bylaws were outdated. It's important to note that just last year, the final touches were put on the current zoning bylaw, and two of the variances that the applicant is asking relief from were among the last bylaws to be settled. The Swansea area rate pairs knows this because we were a party to the appeals and debating new measures. Overall building height and the wall height were renegotiated to address the phenomenon of square box design, which was and still is creating havoc in our established neighborhoods. These designs create significant massing, and especially in peaked roof neighborhoods, and they disrupt the streetscape of established neighborhoods that they are placed in. This is particularly true across Swansea, and it is causing destabilization, which is contrary to the intent and purpose of the official plan. So the problem was how to allow square designs with while minimizing the disruption. So it was decided to permit more overall height, but keep the limits on the sidewalls so that a square building would have a similar massing to the neighboring houses. About 30% that was allowed over the wall height would facilitate dormers on a peaked roof or require significant setbacks for square designs. The goal here was to have some continuity while managing change, so it wasn't to stop change, it's to recognize this situation and to provide for it. So we submitted and reviewed drawings to illustrate this during those meetings and hearings. One of the things we were told by industry reps was that if developers were given more on the building envelope, it would reduce applications to the committee because developers could happily build within the new limits. Instead, the new maximums have become the new as-of-right minimums, and applications to max out the value of each property have multiplied cases of committee adjustment, and we are now looking for ways to deal with the growing number of applications, for example, the triage exercise this morning. So this application not only seeks to set aside the sidewall height, but also to increase the overall height of the building at the same time. This combination is a serious overreach and contrary to the intent and purpose of the bylaws. Out of the hundreds of homes, and I repeat, hundreds of homes included in the applicant's submission, their presentation points to only 23 properties. And of the 23 properties, only four have this combination of excess overall building height and excess sidewall height. These statistics clearly lay before the committee the fact that this application is disruptive and not in keeping with the physical character of the context in which this building is proposed. If the committee cares to inspect the chart that I supplied, page five of my suspicion, it's in the late, very late submissions, you'll find that even the very examples offered in the applicant's presentation documents, no other building combines the nine variances.
Can we bring that document, excuse me, we'd like to bring that document you are referring to on the screen.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The chart you're talking about.
Yes, it's on page five. There we go.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, furthermore, I written submission to the committee highlighted section 45 requirements under which the committee must operate. So all these requirements are emphasized in the committee's own public notice and are legal requirements for the committee, especially so now that the right of appeal makes the committee the end of the road for these applications, at least as far as third parties go. The committee must apply the four tests, and that includes the test for the intent and purpose of both the zoning bylaws and the official plan. My letter demonstrates that the applicant's own presentation fails to meet either of these tests, and the committee would be on scolded.
Thank you, yeah, five minutes left, thank you, yeah. Okay, any question to this speaker before we ask the applicant to respond? Any question, Ms. Byatt, any question to this speaker? No, okay, let's bring back the agent and let's have his response to the opposition.
Yes, hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we do, yeah.
Thank you. So the comment from the from Mr. Singh regarding the application not reflecting, not being compliant with the official plan, the planning department is aware of the planning policies. In fact, they they set the planning policies, they're aware of when those planning policies are in full force and effect. And in this case, as in numerous other cases cited here this morning, the planning department has remained silent on this, indicating that they have no concerns, and therefore it passes the test and is deemed compliant with their official plan. Regarding building height, the requested building height is one and a half inches over the allowable 10-meter height, so it could even be viewed as a technical variance. That aside, this property is the last on the block before the properties turn around the corner onto Flanking Street. And so this property, this building is siding onto the rear yards of the next-door neighbors to the south, therefore there is no close proximity issue. The other thing of interest is that the neighbor to the rear is elevated, their ground level is about eight or nine feet higher than the subject property. So Jury, which is the street to the west, is about eight or nine feet higher. So their natural, their ground floor is almost level with the roof of this proposed building. Regarding wall height, if we go to slide nine, this shows that the proposed wall height is consistent with at least six greater or similar wall heights approved on this block, and they are flat roof, as Mr. Singh says, blocked houses. Although this is not required, the third floor facing the street has been set back approximately 11 feet from the front wall, thereby providing some respecting an angular plane and reducing the apparent height of the house from the street. The context that Mr. Singh refers to is evolving, and this project seems to be in line with that evolving context, albeit looking much different than the 80-year-old prior context, which unfortunately or fortunately is not going to be safeguarded under the current official plan, which this application is being tested against. I think those are my rebuttal comments.
Thank you. I see if the panel have question for you, question for the agent. Ms. Byatt, go ahead, yeah.
Thank you, I just have one question, and that's with regard to the rear deck, I think it's the third floor, that I'm just wondering if it's one of those that requires privacy screening on the north and south sides?
I can respond to that. So the the deck on the, you're responding, you're requesting a comment on the rear deck third floor?
Yes, for privacy screening, sorry, not the not the third floor, I beg your pardon, I think it's the first floor rear deck.
So the first here, so the first floor rear deck is actually within the footprint of the building, and so the deck is actually created by carving out a negative space from the volume of the building. So it's not a deck that is projecting out beyond the rear yard, rear wall or the side wall of the house. It's actually a negative space within the volume of the building.
I'm sorry, I don't know if I've got the right one. I'm looking at the north elevation, A8. Yes, that that's, oops, down again. So that deck that's at the back of what looks like stairs to the basement?
Ah, okay, so that is a basement walkout in the rear yard.
So that.
That deck is a full level below grade.
Oh, it's below grade. Is it below grade on both sides? Because I know that the street Bearisford and rear sloping southward quite severely at times, would there be overlook on the other side or one side as opposed to the other?
So the rear deck is in the basement. It's a basement walkout.
Ah, okay.
It's completely underground.
Oh, it's no privacy issues at all with that deck?
I would think that, no, there's no overlooking issues because the deck is nine feet below grade level, and so we'll call it a deck, we'll call it a basement walkout terrace. So it's about nine feet, a full story below grade. So any overlooking would actually be from any future neighbors' houses that are taller looking down into this subject property.
Yes, might need a canopy. Thank you so much.
Perhaps.
Okay, any more question to the, yes, we have a couple more questions here.
Through you, Madam Chair, I had a similar question to Mr. Byatt, but it's actually concerning the third-story terrace on the north side. I question whether or not privacy screening would benefit the adjacent neighbor to the north there, or whether the, based on the size of the terrace, perhaps other members felt that some privacy screening is not necessary given the size.
Are you talking about what's been?
What's highlighted actually up on the screen?
I thought that is a recess area, that's what he was talking about.
It's, my understanding is there's a slight setback at the third level of the rear main wall. It's not the entire rear main wall, but it's the corner on the north side, and that indent is facilitating a third-story terrace off of the primary bedroom and bathroom. Just given the fact that we're dealing with a building depth variance and some of the adjacencies to the neighbor to the north, I question whether or not we benefit from a small privacy screen up there.
May I comment?
Is that at the front of the house or the rear?
It's at the rear, is my underst.
At the rear.
It's the rear, yeah.
Would you like any comment from me from this side?
Yes, this is actually a question to you. I think that we try to answer it ourselves.
Sure. So, yes, as the panel member correctly indicates, this is a relatively small third-floor deck area that is accessed from the bedroom area. So it's not a high-traffic room such as a recreational space or living room, family room, kitchen. It's a sleeping area. So therefore, the population on that deck is going to be one, maybe two people at any given time, and it is a small area. It is completely sheltered on the south side because this deck is again carved out of the footprint of the building and does not extend across the entire width of the building. But to the panel member's point, this negative space is allocated on the corner of the building, and it's open to the subject property's rear yard and open to the north property's rear yard. And so technically, there could be some overlooking from. And so technically, there, there could be some overlooking from someone standing on that deck. So I'm, I'm, I would venture to say the owner would probably not be opposed to a screen, whether, whether it's mandated or not, I'll leave it to you to make that a condition if, if necessary.
Yeah, it's the south side of that little balcony, or little deck, right?
The open side is facing north. Yeah, the open side is facing north, and which is looking into the north, next-door neighbors' property, and it's open on this, which is looking into the subject property.
Maybe I'm looking at the site plan at different locations, yeah, so it's north side, okay, as long as it's correct, I'm, that's it.
Correct, north side.
Okay, any more question to the, yeah, we have more and more questions.
Question, it's about the variance number nine, and we see there is quite a significant variance from the minimum of seventy-five, right, with, you know, regards to soft landscaping, and you're proposing forty-five percent. I was just wondering if you can suggest, or you have any ideas how you can mitigate that?
Are you talking about variance number five?
Number nine.
Number nine, soft landscaping.
Sure, so, so let me speak about that. So if we pull up slide seven, if you wish, or actually, we can pull up the site plan. So there we go. The street is on the right-hand side of this drawing, and the double-hatched, if you, yeah, maybe zoom in just a bit more. So the double-hatched area is the existing parking pad and part of the approach to it. So as I mentioned before, I think that there are at least four other approved softscape variances on this block that are greater than or similar to the forty-five percent being requested. However, I think we have to look at what is the soft landscaping intended to do, which is to aid the environment and more specifically accommodate water infiltration for stormwater runoff. And it's, as I said, it's worth noting that in practical-functional terms, the soft landscaping percentage for the front yard is actually sixty percent because the parking pad is made of forty percent permeable lockstone paving. So in reality, this front yard has the benefit of sixty percent of soft landscaping. However, because of the way the bylaw defines soft landscaping, the extra fifteen percent soft landscaping that this pad represents is not allowed to be included in the calculation. And so because it's an existing parking pad, we want to keep it, that prevents a car going on to the curb and to the street and using up a parking permit. And we would probably be wanting to keep the proposed building position where it is anyway because it reflects the existing building position, and as a result, it allows us to keep the parking pad as well. Therefore, we've taken every opportunity to maximize the soft landscaping here while keeping the parking pad, maintaining the position of the building, and observing some aesthetics for the streetscape. So we feel that fifty, sixty percent functional soft landscaping is very, very respectable, and in fact, even the forty-five is greater than at least four other similar properties on this block.
Would you be open to if we have it as a condition, the permeable pavers?
Absolutely.
Are you suggesting the permeable paper for the, for the stone walkway or the parking spot, parking, parking area, okay, yeah. All right, thank you, any more question, please?
Just one, Chair, since we were on the topic of the front yard, you mentioned just a moment ago, new stone walkway, it's difficult to be, applicant, is the new stone walkway also intended to be permeable?
No, the permeable area is that double-hatched area that we see. The stone walkway is proposed to be non-permeable for the simple reason that this is an area that we would like to be able to keep snow and ice free.
Okay.
For the safety, especially given that part of this master plan is to accommodate the owner's senior parents, senior-aged parents, and we don't want to have any issues with slipping and falling.
Thank you, and I do take heart that the parking pad and that area around it is all, will be permeable, so that's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we, we finished our questions? Okay, now we are in committee, and let me just make a quick one about the front yard of soft landscaping. Don't forget, what they can calculate is within the property, and I think in many cases, sometimes the, the area between the city and the boulevard and the sidewalk is actually a lot of landscaping, sometimes you can offset the deficiency a little bit there because they're not touching that part, but there's a tree, there's some grass, so, and even visually, it's more landscaping then, than you think. So, okay, to comment and or motion, please, yeah? Yes, yes, sure, yeah.
You know, with, with regards to new construction, I think.
Can you speak into?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so this house is new construction, and we, when we look at the, you know, irregular lots or existing foundations, you know, the setbacks of variances could be justified, but we are looking at the new building, and frankly, I don't see the justification. For example, we have a variance number six from the side setbacks. I don't see the justification of, you know, the side, side, sorry, being point three thirty-three as opposed to point nine, as well as we have the front setback, which is a variance number one, which I have a less problem with, but with the side, and we are creating this very, very massive, you know, building with not a lot of distance between the buildings, so I have a problem with that. And in addition, we were talking about the permeable pavers and the privacy screens, I think we have to have it as a condition. But I would strike the variance number one and six.
I, I have slightly taken this even on that side, yeah, setback, you, you look at the, the survey, the existing building is actually right on the lot line, they, they have tried to improve it actually for the new proposal. The only reason why this somehow resulted in a small setback is that because a lot itself is not really wide. And then they, 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 if you're building a house or new development, you know, it make it sort of more viable for them, maybe, I'm not putting worst to them, but they actually have make attempt improving it by bringing it, there's, setting it up high, more away from the, from, from the existing condition. That's, that's, that's my, my observation. Okay, more comments, yeah? Okay.
Sure, I'll weigh in very quickly. I, I don't have an issue with the side guard variances, I did initially have some concern with respect to the side main wall height, but I think that this application meets the four tests, specifically with respect to the main wall height variance that I'd like to speak to. I appreciate that there is a substantial setback of the third-story addition to mitigate the massing from the streetscape, so we're dealing with a two-story front main wall with a considerable setback. You know, this is something you would see more akin in a, frankly, in a heritage building where you're trying to preserve sightlines in the street, so I really appreciate that gesture, and I think that really helps to strengthen the application. I think the third-story addition is also mitigated by the terrace at the rear, at the, on the north side, there's a bit of a cutout in the building there. So that, that helped to deal with that concern with variance number three. And then I had some concern with respect to variance number nine, the soft landscaping, but I think some comments and questions that we've had in discussion have assaged my concerns with that. Certainly, the use of permeable pavers, I think, is a good solution, and also recognizing that there is an existing parking pad, it is permeable from what I can tell, and that that is going to be maintained. So, yeah, I, I, I get, any questions or concerns that I did have, have, have been addressed, I, I do think this meets the four tests to proceed for approval.
Okay, Mr. Byatt, you have any comment, or you have a motion?
I certainly can put forward a motion. I think that certainly I've had satisfaction, my main concern was variance number nine, and as you pointed out, the side yard setback is an existing situation. I don't have any issues with this particular application, the only conditions I would apply to this would be forestry number two, and there's a third-floor balcony on the north side, have privacy screens attached. I don't believe there are any other conditions attached to this particular application, so I'd move for approval with those two conditions in mind.
Okay, anyone second?
I'll second it.
Yeah, George, Ms. Allison, Mr. Allison second, yeah, all in favor with the condition forestry and also the privacy screen? I thought that it's already permeable, they said.
It's part of the application, I don't know if we want to include it as, but if it's there.
Yeah, they, yeah, they already said that.
We need to tie it to the site plan.
Yeah, maybe we can tie it to the site plan, okay.
Might be a good idea.
All right, tie to the site plan. With, it's clear, anyone sec, we have a second, all in favor? In, okay, unanimously approved with the conditions.
And I believe you have one opposed, do we have one opposed on, or it's all in?
Oh, you opposed, I didn't.
No, 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 it's, it's fine.
I think we, if, through you, through you, Madam Chair, I think for the record, we have to have our members weigh in one way or another, or.
No, no, I, Sabina, I saw that.
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, Madam.
My concern, I think, you know, our.
Has been resolved?
Addressed my concerns and.
So you're in support?
I'll support it.
Yeah, she, she raised her hand.
I apologize, I missed that. I just wanted to give the opportunity to ensure that you're, you're included as part of the record.
You know, I have to raise the concerns, but you know, it's, you know, and I want to hear your opinion.
For sure.
Yeah, no, she's, she's persuaded, and then it's got a good hand, I saw the hand, I thought, oh.
I missed that, I missed, I looked away.
Okay, through you, Madam Chair, we can move on to item number nine, seventy-seven Almeida Avenue, this is the second-last item that was held.
Okay, this is to order the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a front ground floor addition, it's a front, enclosed front porch, rear and south-side ground floor additions, second and third-story addition and a front integral garage, garage and a new front porch was there, front, second-story balcony and a rear basement walkout and a rear front and third-floor decks, there will be a secondary dwelling in the basement. We received survey site plan, floor plan elevation and revised elevation and three photographs of trees and various decision affecting the property. And corresponding from, from the agent, we received comment from urban forestry and transportation services, we also received advisory from, comment from urban forestry.
Through you, Madam Chair, we do have the agent online and no registered speakers for this item.
Okay.
So at this time, we'll unmute the agent.
Yes.
Hello, Sorab, you have been unmuted. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of committee, my name is Sorab Ibrahim.
Your voice is a little bit faint, can you try, can you please speak a little bit closer to the mic so we can hear you better?
Can you hear me now better?
Yes, yes, much better, yeah.
Sorry about that. My name is Sorab Ibrahim, I'm the architect and agent of the subject project, my address is thirty-three Lerner Avenue.
Okay.
I'm ready here for verification on any items.
Do we have opposition, do we have?
Through you, Madam Chair, there are no registered speakers.
Okay. Oh, in that case, I'm going to check whether we need a presentation from you then, do we need, you, you like to have?
I, I have a question.
Oh, you have a question?
We may, I don't need a formal presentation, but I do have questions that.
Okay, so let's get into, right into question, we have some question for you, okay, go ahead.
Sure. Through you, Madam Chair, a question for the applicant, I do have concern with respect to the variance number three concerning height, and I, I noticed that there is a recent development, there's an adjacent build directly, if I'm not mistaken, to the north at seventy-nine. Perhaps if you can just speak to, specifically to that variance, and I'm, I, I think that, if I'm not mistaken, I'll sort of ask other members, but I think that property is a good barometer in terms of a new development of a similar form, style, and, and just so I can wrap my head a bit, a little bit around the variance, because from a, certainly from a quantitative standpoint, it is quite an increase in height. So then the, the next question is I have, I have is how does that affect the massing from a qualis, qualitative standpoint? So yeah, I'll, I'll leave that for the applicant, maybe can speak specifically to the height.
A variance number three, height, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, in the last few weeks, we were working, we continue our work on the project and we improved the design, I don't know if you have the last PDF that we sent a few days ago, that included some three new renders of what we currently have as final, it would be great if we can show it.
We pull that document up? Is there, there's a supplementary material?
Yeah, it's a revised, on a supplemental package, there's a revised elevation, let's bring that up in the supplemental package. This way.
So one of the. One of the major concerns from the beginning of this project was the front wall height. After going back and forth with the client and almost thirty design options for the front facade, we were able to reduce the height from the original variance, which was ten-point-two meter, we reduced it to nine-point-four meter, and if you please show the PDF, the, the regular, this catch-up perspectives. The geometry of the project is, in a way that we, we tried our best to reduce the impact of the height. The, the first thing that we did was basically removing the front existing porch, meaning that the main face of the building is sitting back from the street, which definitely has improved impact of the height. Some part of the second story and third story is, is sitting back for more than six feet, almost two meter, stepping back, which again, it's another addition of what we were able to gain, to reduce the, the, the way that the height will, will show up to the pedestrian perspective. There is also a setback of three feet in north side where the neighbor building is, so we stepped it in, in, in the middle of the building, which allowed more light to penetrate in between the buildings and much less shadow over that building. On the side, it definitely hides the high wall because it steps in. We also sloped the front wall on the third floor to break the height in the pedestrian height perspective again. We don't have the tall forehead as before, and it definitely matches best with the current character of Cedarville, which is modern classic. We also added lots of horizontal lines separating the different materials, again visually break the height. And, and as I mentioned in the beginning, our, our major improvement was lowering the front wall height from ten-point-two meter to nine-point-four meter, we reduced it almost zero-point-eight meter height. So basically, given all this, we, we, we think that our. So basically, given all this, we, we, we think that our, our building doesn't have much impact on the adjacent property. We really appreciate actually the adjacent property. It has a very sleek, modern look, at the same time, very minimal. And our character is somehow resembling the same. We tried our best to, to have a minimal, modern, at the same time, classic design, so that each of the elements that we have designed in the front facade can keep their own character and work perfectly with their own function.
Can, I actually have a couple of things want to confirm with you. Okay, did I miss something? You, you said that you have revised some height, some figures that you mentioned, I did not see it on the agenda. Did you revise some high, wall heights?
Yes.
So that's it, affect any of the variances in front of us? Let's say the variance three, has it been changed?
Sorry, like I can't see.
Variance number three? Okay, it says that it's the main wall heights, we, is allow 8.5, but you are proposing 12.45. The variance does not change, right? Because it's taking the highest one, I guess. I, we just want.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, yeah, yeah. So that is related to the item that I said, we, we have sloped the front wall. So when you look at the third floor, we have sloped it back.
No, no, the question is, no, I don't need to go to that detail. I just want to use to look at variance number three, has that been changed? Or you still require 12.45?
We still require 12.45.
That's it, that is, yeah, that's the one thing. The second thing is that you, you have presented a revised elevation, which is, is the west elevation, right? Just now.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, the west elevation in your previous package is slightly different. You have sort of, sort of make the front wall more straight line, but then in your proposed, it's got a jog, it's, yeah, the, the right-hand side is a little bit higher, right? So are you changing, you're changing your, you're revising your west elevation?
Correct, yes.
Okay, that's, so we have to tie, yeah, we have to include the revised, but the revised west elevation is a perspective. Do you have a drawing of the revised west elevation?
In the same package sheet number one, I guess it's the, the actual elevation.
Okay, you do have, you have the, in the, in the package, okay. As long as the change has been, yeah, the, what you call documented, that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, yeah, we, okay, we do, do we have, no speakers, right? We have questions. Yeah, okay, go ahead, we, yeah.
It's just to continue with the elevations, like we are looking at the western elevation, and I mean the amended ones, okay? And there is this south elevation that's, I can see, or correct me if I'm wrong, the third floor walls are still straight. They're not slanted as, as in the, you know, 3D models.
Oh, you're 100% right. That, that is our mistake. We were so much focused on lowering that front wall to 9.4 meter that we, we have definitely missed that. We're so sorry.
So, okay, so is it on the, both east and west sides that?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so probably we'll need to note it.
Yes, I do not know how we can note it, but maybe we ask our deputy secretary treasurer. Can we just say that the side elevation have to revise to match the perspective presented?
Through you, Madam Chair, are you considering imposing, imposing a condition that ties them to their elevation plans?
No, what it is, they have forgotten to revise the side elevation to reflect the change they made. The front elevation, they seem to have the drawings to reflect it, but they mentioned a sloping, sloping back the, there is some wall, but it's not reflected anywhere.
And does it affect the variances that are before you?
No, it's not, but then he's, yeah, no, he is trying to compliment, make it the massing is less imposing.
Right, so we can, if you impose a condition that describes how those elevations will be built, then we can do it that way. We can't have them submit plans because they're not before us today.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
And also, I mean, I, I do have some wording, but I like the applicant himself wording so that it is what he's proposing.
So you can go back to the applicant and have them confirm for the record exactly what they're proposing in words?
Yes. Can we bring back the applicant? You have heard our discussion, right? So can you provide some kind of description of, to replace some missing side elevation revision? Is that the portion of the first floor, is, is it the west elevation is sloping back?
Correct.
Yeah, so you, I'd like to have your wording, see whether we can put it as a condition, yeah.
Referring to our updated drawing, the west elevation and third floor will be sloping back, or I'm, I'm just measuring it right now exactly as it's in our drawings, 0.7 meter back.
All right, that, that will, that will be good, yeah, yeah. So we caught that, all right, so it's a good observation. So any more question? Yeah, Mr. Byer has a question.
Thank you, Chair. Just to the agent, the third floor rooftop deck, could you tell me how high the, I imagine it's a north and south side walls are? I, I'm concerned again about privacy issues papers, so I'm not sure how, how, how high your walls are at that particular stage.
So in the back, we have, I'm just going back to our drawings, we have one meter high carpet that if we need to improve any privacy, we can add privacy screens to cover up to 1.5 meter high.
I think that's important.
And for the front, it's the same as well.
Yeah, it's particularly the.
Is it south and north?
North and south.
What side, sorry, I can't hear. Is it south side only?
I think it's south and north.
North, north, south edges, okay, got it, yeah. The first floor, rear, first floor deck, yeah.
Yeah, and just another quick question, is your new driveway going to be permeable or produce permeable materials?
It is permeable, and there was actually a comment from transportation. It wasn't related to the design, they were saying that they were okay with the design, but they were actually telling us that we need to apply for curb cuts.
Yeah.
Permit, which our client was wishing to keep the front existing tree, which relates to forestry comment as well, and that is why we have proposed this new driveway on the north side.
Lovely, thank you.
So are we imposing the transportation condition or not?
There is a transportation condition, yes.
Yes, okay.
Forestry one, transportation.
Yes, okay, just want to catch all that. Okay, any more questions, please? Okay, now we're in committee. Comments and our motions, please. Yes.
Maybe I'll take this off.
Mr. Byer?
I, I think this is a most interesting design, and subsequently, it's a revised plan. The agents and the architects have attempted to make a really interesting structure that is, I think, quite appealing as well. I don't have any conditions, I don't have any issues with any of the variants requested. I think we've heard explanations for all of them. I would only add that there is a transportation condition. There's a forestry advisory as well. Now, I'm not sure the forestry advisory and forestry condition, one or two separate items, but I'd like them noted perhaps. And the driveway is permeable, so I think that could be fine. The rooftop deck, south and north side, privacy screens to be applied.
Yes.
Outside of that, I think it's good to go.
Yes. Okay, I want to, you, you catch everything, right? Because it had to tie to also the revised ease elevation, right?
Yes, that would be good.
It's west, we saw, I'm sorry, it's the west elevation. And also sloping the west wall on above the floor to.
Through you, Madam Chair, for the record.
Yeah.
It's urban forestry number one.
Yes.
The transportation services, there's three conditions.
Yes.
West elevation, comment that the applicant had made about the revision to that elevation. But we will state it in words because we do not have a revised plan to tie it to.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the third floor deck privacy screening.
Yes, we caught all of them.
South of north.
North and south edges, yes, that's correct.
And that is the, all the condition, and Mr. Byer, that is a motion, right?
Yes, that would, perfect.
So anyone second to that motion? Yeah, Ms. Walbert, second, all in favor of all the conditions listed. Three, and yeah, Mr. Allison dissent. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, we can move to the last item from this morning's session. It was held, item number 15, 55 Castle Frank Road. There are no registered speakers for this item, and we do have the agent online.
Okay, 55 Castle Frank Road, the purpose is to order existing two and a half story detached by constructing a one-story side, south side ground floor addition with a porch and stairs, a new front porch with stairs to, and a rear basement walkout, a rear cover deck and stair, and also a rear ground floor terrace and an inground pool and a serious structure, it's a shade structure. Also to construct a new front, front driveway with two points of entry from the street, Castle Frank Road. We received survey site plan for plan elevations and a revised site plan and cover letter from the agent, abus report and presentation material from agent. We received comment from Heritage Department and the urban forestry and also transportation services. They have support from 49 Castle Frank and 53, 57, 76 and 70, Castle Frank and 76 and 78 is from Dale Avenue. And, and they have opposition from 50 Castle Frank Road.
Through you, Madam Chair, there's also the opposition petition in support from 1 Hawthorne Avenue and 8 Mackenzie Avenue.
Oh, I see, we knew, that's the late material, right?
And again, we do have the agent online and no registered speakers for this item.
So we are ready for the agent.
Hello, Stephanie, you're unmuted to speak?
Hi, my name is Stephanie Al of 11 Watkinson Avenue. I'm the agent representing the owners of 55 Castle Frank.
You do have some opposition, I believe, no?
Through you, Madam Chair, there is no registered speakers for this item.
Okay, you do not have, opposition wants to speak. So let me check with the panel whether they want a presentation from you first. Do you want to have a presentation or you're okay with going to questions?
I would love to hear the.
A little bit?
A little bit, you know, the answer to the opposition, you know, the.
Okay, understand, okay. Okay, the panel seem to want you to address, although they do not hear, but some, some points that raised by the opposition, and maybe a very, very brief description of your project.
Thank you.
Through, through you, Madam Chair, I believe the only consideration or the concern might, may have to do with respect to the variance for the driveway. I understand that there's a much wider scope with this application, but.
That's what I'm saying.
I think what we're just dealing with is hardscaping variance and the circular driveway application, and I just, I don't need to hear the merits on the other items, so I don't know if that helps to direct our time.
Okay, because we, what it is, we do, we do not require a presentation, right? But we do have questions, let's get into the questions. Let's ask your questions about the driveway, please, yeah.
If I may suggest, through you, Madam Chair, the applicant submitted a revised site plan, perhaps they can speak to the revisions on that site plan, and that may justify any variance changes?
That would help, yeah.
But, but I thought there was some question about a specific thing on the site, site plan, okay. Okay, so you heard our discuss, discussion, can you also just go, go through your revised site plan, what has been changed and, and what's?
Yes, so the purpose of the revision, the site plan that was submitted on February 19th was because transportation had submitted a memo in support of our application. However, they did request that we revise the driveway width to be 2.6 meters wide in maximum width, as well as the new curb cut that would be required at the south. So we were able to turn around and submit this revised site plan, just adding these addition on.
So we will tie the decision with the site plan, revised site plan, you, you, we're going to approve, yeah. Any other questions to the speaker? Yes, Mr. Byer has a question, yeah.
You know, my, my concern, of course, you've only got two variances, so, you know, it's not like we asking for a heck of a lot. But the variance number two is dependent on variance one. And variance number one, the deficiency is substantial, and it's all related to, I imagine, the need or the desire to have a curved driveway, while at the same time, you've got a driveway going, leading up to the garage. So I, I, I'm not quite sure why a curved driveway necessary while you've got an existing driveway, because at the end of the day, you, you've got, you've got almost 30%, a little bit more, 30%, sorry, 50%, 30% deficiency in your soft landscaping because of the front drive. What's a justification for that, I want?
Perhaps it might help if we pull up the presentation that I had prepared. Maybe we can just quickly go over some of the slides.
I think so, yeah.
Is that in the supplemental? Yeah, okay.
Through you, Madam Chair, it's on the screen now, it's being.
Okay.
Great, thank you. So the driveway design is actually part of a larger, comprehensive front yard landscaping design of the property. As you can see, these are photos of the existing condition. The front yard is currently quite unmaintained and dilapidated, and the owners have engaged a landscape architect to design the front yard to not only include, excuse me, not only include the curved driveway, but incorporate a new front yard deck, walkways and planting beds. The, to speak to your question about the existing driveway, so the owners are proposing this new driveway to facilitate their sort of day-to-day access to the house. The existing driveway to the north of the property is currently shared with their neighbor. Given the narrow width of this driveway, it does require quite a bit of difficulty in maneuvering of the car all the way out from the back of the property. And as well, there is actually no right-of-way that's tied to this driveway, so it kind of means that this access is not really guaranteed in the future. So the purpose of this driveway really is just to facilitate the owners in being able to, you know, like park their car and unload groceries, pack the kids in, just because that existing driveway is a little bit difficult to get to.
So do I understand what you say, that they actually, it's easier to those go So do I understand what you say, that they actually, it's easier to just go in and out? But are you planning to park on the driveway and not using the garage at the back? Because you're using the garage at the back, you still have to go up there, right? And so the driveway is not going to help that, right?
Sorry, yes, so the parking will still be maintained in that existing driveway, but really, the purpose of this, this new driveway is to facilitate their day-to-day use for just like loading and unloading the car. And then to speak to the concern about the soft landscaping percentages, we are mindful of what we are proposing as a result of this driveway, and we are proposing that the surface be finished with permeable pavers just to help mitigate that variance that we're seeking.
I have an additional question, when you say that you have revised the site plan, reduced the width of some, some part maybe of the proposed driveway, will that increase the landscaping or soft landscaping? Or is this, it's still the same amount you're proposing?
So, if you, if you can just scroll to the next slide.
No, yeah.
The one after this one, yes. So with the revision to the driveway, what we were able to gain just a few percentages of soft landscaping. I know it might be minor, but it did help to increase the landscaping percentage from the original proposal.
So you're not, you're not changing, right? Are you revising your variance number one?
So yes, the variance number one on the, on our zoning notice currently has the soft landscaping at thirty-eight point two six meters squared or forty point four percent. So newly submitted site plan drawing that was submitted on February nineteenth, it is forty-one point four percent, so thirty-nine point two seven meters squared.
Thirty-nine point two seven meters?
Correct.
And forty-one point, forty-one point? Four percentage, okay. One percent increase, okay, yeah. All right. Are there any questions? Okay, Mr. By, I actually, if I start my comment, I agree with Mr. By. I don't see any justification for the circular driveway. They have a driveway and they, they want to rework the front landscaping, ignoring that soft landscaping requirement. They can easily incorporate that too, I think, and I do not, I cannot support this.
If I can just provide some additional comments. This is also, we've dealt with a few heritage properties, and I actually thank you for welcoming me to the Toronto historic panel today because I don't, I don't get to deal with a lot of heritage properties in North York. So this property is located in the South Rosedale Heritage Conservation District, and I looked up the draft plan for the Heritage Conservation District. And within that, the plan provides what's called a streetscape heritage character statement. And it describes the neighborhood as a carefully designed garden suburb of the late nineteenth and or early twentieth century. I might also note that in that character statement, it notes that there are some legalized front yard parking pads and or extensive hard servicing that tends to detract from the beauty of the architecture. So to add, I mean, to your comment, I do have concerns from a quantitative standpoint, but also recognizing that this is a Heritage Conservation District Part Five, which has to do with, largely in part with the streetscape. And I recognize also the South Rosedale HCD plan. I do recognize, South Rosedale is very much so a, as it describes, a garden, a garden suburb. And I think it's really, really important just to be mindful that we are maintaining those soft landscaping requirements. And I also, I say that also in response to the immediate neighbor who wrote in in opposition, who I might add also, from his property, has some extensive land, soft landscaping directly adjacent, which this property owner is afforded the benefit of. So I think it's important for everybody within the neighborhood, specifically the variance of desirability for the, for the neighborhood. I don't think it's a very desirable variance to permit, so I'm supportive of the chair's comments and I don't support the application as well.
Any other comment or we have a motion? Okay, a motion.
Bring a motion to refuse the application for the aforementioned comments that were stated concerning meeting the soft landscaping requirement. It's just too much from a quantitative standpoint and also recognizing that this is a Part Five Heritage Conservation District, and we need to be mindful of the streetscape, particularly the, the soft landscape.
Thank you, anyone second, Mr. By a second, all in favor to refuse? Inadmissibly refuse, yeah. That's the last item of the morning agenda. Are we taking a lunch break?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair, we do need a lunch break. I propose that we come back for, if we do exactly one hour, then it would be two forty-five.
Yes.
Okay, two forty-five.
Yeah, we're fifteen minutes late.
Was it two thirty start time?
I think it's two thirty starting time.